I'll make the motion to close out the executive session.
Poppy move is second, in discussion, hearing none, that passes. You made no decisions in the executive session, am I correct, Mr. Clerk?
That's correct.
Okay, uh, at this time, I would like to, uh, call a roll, see if we all here.
Roll call for our regular meeting. Councilmember Baker.
Present.
Councilmember Khalid. Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Yard.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
Councilmember Gums.
Here.
Councilmember Wowell.
Here.
And there at which is present also is City Attorney Amelia Walker and City Manager Odie Dunne. Have a call.
Okay, then you're able to put the invitation and pledge allegiance to the flag. Let us pray. We come tonight and tonight we remember the words from the heart of Robert Frost. Spoken to us from the heart of the Honorable Emma Darnell. Rest in peace, our leader. The woods are lovely, dark, and deep, but I have a promise to keep. And miles to go before I sleep. Miles to go before I sleep. We come with an attitude of gratitude because we're thankful. Because for all of us early this morning, our eyes opened. And our yesterday, what we call tomorrow became our today. So we thank you for waking us up this morning. We thank you for clothinge us in our right mind. We thank you for the activity of all of our limbs. We thank you. We thank you because we have miles that we must continue to travel. There are times when the woods get to be lovely and yet also dark and sometimes deep. But we have a promise to keep. And the promise we must keep must be kept for the least of these. Every plan must be for the least of these. Every dream, every vision must be for the least of these. Every city council meeting must be for the least of these. Every elected official must be, every police, every fire department, every public works must be for the least of these. Every economic development, every, for the least of these is the place where I want to be. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all. You may proceed. Uh, before we pastor and before we go into president, we'd also like to note the passing of, uh, House Representative Derrick Jackson's lovely wagon this morning. And we ask that you keep, uh, Representative Jackson in your prayer. Clerk.
First item on the, first item on the agenda is our presentation and announcement. We have a proclamation presented to San Town 10 U girls basketball, Councilmember Wowell. Presented to Robert D.J. Jackson, Councilmember Wowell. L.A. Pink, Councilmember Baker, and Stone Waltel Elementary, Councilmember Gums.
Can I just suggest that this, um, San Town 10 U be put to the end of their list? They had a game and they're still trying to ride and proceed after that and the order is presented. Thank you.
Got the microphone.
It is my distinct honor to see and to recognize, um, one of the city of South Fulton. Whereas Robert D.W. Jackson, affectionately known as R.D.W., moved to Atlanta in nineteen ninety-two. And has made an double, indelible and substantial impact in the newspaper industry in Atlanta and throughout the country. Whereas Mr. Jackson has spent over thirty-five years as, in newspaper sales and marketing for minority publications across the nation, including the Los Angeles Cinema, the Philadelphia Tribune, and other prominent publications targeted towards communities of color. Whereas Mr. Jackson has contributed to the financial wealth and sustainability of local newspapers such as the Atlanta Voice, the Atlanta Daily World, the Mondo Hispanic Code, and Love Vision. Whereas Mr. Jackson has been recognized for his skillful salesmanship and business, business acumen in the Atlanta newspaper community by bridging the gap between Hispanics, African-Americans, and the mainstream media in Atlanta. Whereas on March twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen, Mr. Jackson was recognized by the Georgia Minority Business Awards with the Sales and Marketing Industry of the Year Award for his work as an executive marketing specialist with the Atlanta Voice and the Hispanic and African-American Newspaper Network. Now therefore being resolved, the mayor and council recognizes Mr. Jackson for his lifelong career accomplishments, his vision and impact on integrating the newspaper industry in Atlanta and throughout the United States. We congratulate him for receiving the Sales and Marketing Industry of the Year Award and do hereby proclaim Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty nineteen, as Robert R.D.W. Jackson Day in the city of South Fulton.
All right. Well, this is really a honor, especially for our new city, because I'm proud to be a member of the city of South Fulton.
Thank you.
When people ask me, say, "Where you live at?" "You live in Atlanta?" I says, "No, I live in the city of South Fulton."
Thank you.
And they say, "Where is that at?" I said, "You must not be reading your papers." So in honor of that, I just wanted to, like, the mayor, I remember when he first started, I did his first ad. I got his first ad when he was full town, in my hotel. But I really appreciate this honor, and my wife need to come up here because she don't, come on up here, Miss Marie. This is my wife, Miss Marie, she's a good wife. She should be up cliff to there. But anyway, wait, I'm not gonna hold the mayor and everyone else, and Rosie.
I'm trying to figure.
Tell your son, uh, he sent me thing for my birthday to come and get a, uh, what's his name there? Adjustment.
My son.
Yeah. Your son-in-law, Mr. Grant.
That's my son.
Okay, well, anyway, I'm not gonna hold y'all anymore.
Congratulations.
Two and three, one, two, and three. One, two, and three.
Thank you, all right. I'll, I'll call. Can I just call?
Call me tomorrow.
I will.
Next is L.A. Pink, Councilmember Baker.
Uh, real quick, first of all, I just wanted, before we go forward, I don't know where he went. I just wanted to thank Pastor Henry for his prayer today. It was, uh, exceptional, and, um, I normally don't point that stuff out, but it was like, he was speaking to what we were about to do when it comes to Ms. Pink, uh, in responses to, in regards to what we do for the least of these. I've never met anybody since Reverend Jacob Maxi. Our late great Reverend Jacob, Jacob Maxi in District Seven, who had a strong, loud voice and altruistic spirit for people who are considered the least in our community. This young lady has been a part of every initiative in District Seven and probably has created, I've been able to take the credit for some of her ideas. Uh, over this past year, we've given away almost a thousand turkeys, and we've gone door to door with those things since I started out. When we had these very, very microwaved budgets, she's been able to help me connect with partnerships in and around the Atlanta metro area to bring together, uh, feats that were phenomenal in District Seven and in the city of South Fulton. And I want to say thank you before I even start reading this, because I don't want to tell you a story because I want to give you a second, but this proclamation is from the city of South Fulton and it reads, Laquana Alexander, popular zone is L.A. Pink. Is a prolific Atlanta community organizer and humanitarian who is dedicated to working for and on the side of the underrepresented. Whereas L.A. Pink, who would say she walks by faith and not by sight, has overcome personal trials that have brought her into a renewed vision for her spiritual service as she has witnessed firsthand the needs of the homeless and subsequently dedicated herself to implementing assistance for those individuals that might be renewed and restored in life. Whereas L.A. Pink, through her integral, integral community boutique, as well as her unity in our community ATL organizations, have partnered with Five-O-One-C-three's nonprofit organizations Restore Life and Fountain of Hope to provide charitable services and resources to the underserved in Fulton County. Whereas July twenty sixteen, L.A. Pink established unity in our community ATL, described by L.A. Pink, as a hand-up organization, is a support system that got its start providing monthly feed the homeless initiatives in Atlanta's Renaissance Park, where organizations such as Well Care and Recovery Consultants of Atlanta also provide healthcare services. John Corp provides personal identity documentation services and Safe Link provides phone services, all for the homeless. Whereas L.A. Pink has also partnered with the city of South Fulton, Mark Baker, and many of his initiatives within the, the South Fulton community include Thanksgiving, Christmas, and clothing drives, work source drives, as well as HIV awareness initiatives. Now therefore being resolved, the mayor and city council of the city of South Fulton do hereby proclaim Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty nineteen, as L.A. Pink and Laquana Alexander Appreciation Day in the city of South Fulton.
All glory to God, um, who is the head of my life and that is making everything possible. I always say there's no I in team, but there is an E in we, and we continue to do this together. Um, and I have a team of people that collectively come together with me to set a purpose in our community, um, with, for God. And that's Cassandra, that is St. Claire, can you guys please step up here? Um, all of the raising, uh, Rodrick, Ward, anybody that I invited here pretty much, if you guys just come on up. Because this is my team, this is, um, why we do what we do, um, along with Roger. Fountain of Hope, over at Fountain of Hope, it's be over twenty-five thousand families a month, and, um, all over. I take, um, two hundred to three hundred, um, sandwiches, well, actually a whole meal down to them once a month. I mean, every Monday and Wednesday, not only before you guys home, but this is why I do what I do. These young ones right here, um, they, this, this is, this is what this is for, always. I always pass it always to them because this is our future. Um, this is what we do and for the community. I would love for, um, you guys to speak real quick, just say to them.
I am so embarrassed, I'm not here to speak, I am so proud of L.A. Pink and the work that you all do, Pastor Barry and St. Claire and, um, Rodrick. And so I'm proud of your party, thank you, and thank you, city of South Fulton, for this proclamation.
Please let me do that first, after, oh, uh, please forgive me, because I, it is an honor, it is an honor to be a part of South Fulton County. It is an honor to be a part of what you guys are doing here. I told you the day one, that when, that God had told me to help this man right here in any kind of way that we needed, and I've been doing that just as such, it was, uh, from him, not anyone else. And when you're obedient to God, and you don't look for anything from, you just do the task that God said for you. He said that he'll make room for you in your home, and so that's what it is, it's just making room, and it's all about my teams there.
That's it.
I have nothing much to say, but well deserved, it's honored to serve with you.
I would like to add too, before we finish, I want to take our picture. Ms. Alexander is responsible for the toy, uh, situation that we were able to bring to McNair Middle School with Councilwoman Jackson and Councilman Khalid around Christmas, one of those exceptional lead kids. At the very last minute, Fountain of Hope, L.A. Pink, they all came together, and this is the type of partnerships until we get established that we have to culminate and bring together, and I'm proud to have you, uh, here today. Thank you so much.
One, two, and three. And, and three. One, two, and three. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Thank you also.
Is that the last one?
No, it's not.
Uh, may I have first of all, yeah, from Stone Waltel Elementary, can I invite with you? All right.
As you all know, it's very important for South Fulton to recognize our schools that are right here in our city. So I wanted to take time to give a proclamation to Stone Waltel Elementary, which I love all my schools, but it's one of my very favorites. So I'm gonna read this proclamation. Whereas the scholars at Stone Waltel Elementary are exceptional and make everything worthwhile and rewarding. And whereas the vision of Stone Waltel Elementary is to be recognized for world-class instruction, professional learning, talent development, stakeholder engagement, and continuous improvement, as the scholars, staff, and community deserve nothing less. And whereas Stone Waltel Elementary has experienced some unprecedented success in recent years, as there is a confident expectation of improving upon the success and hopes of realizing a vision for courage and future scholars as it continues to be one of the top performance schools in our city. Whereas Stone Waltel Elementary, located in the city of South Fulton, has been selected for the two thousand, excuse me, the twenty nineteen Best of College Park Award in the elementary school categories by the College Park Award Program. And whereas this honor marks the third consecutive year in which Stone Waltel Elementary has won this award. And whereas this honor marks the, no, I'm sorry, and whereas each year the College Park Award Program identifies organizations that have achieved exceptional marketing success in their local communities. These are local companies that enhance a positive image through so, through their service to their customers and our community. And whereas a community is, it is important to recognize the great things that are happening in South Fulton County schools as we must find non-traditional ways to build our own narrative to those who are unaware of the great schools that we have in our city of South Fulton. And whereas the city of South Fulton will re, continue to recognize our schools for their accomplishments and as we will continue to foster a strong collaboration among our educational community. And now therefore being resolved, the mayor and council of the city of South Fulton salutes Stone Waltel Elementary and proudly recognize Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty nineteen, as Stone Waltel Elementary Appreciation Day in the city of South Fulton.
I just want to, uh, acknowledge the wonderful staff and students that we have at our school. You can't raise achievement, you can't care for kids unless you have caring, talented people, and Stone Waltel is blessed to have that. We're furthermore blessed to have great partners such as, uh, Councilwoman Gums, Mayor Bailey Edwards, and the council, who I recognize from various meetings with my own colleagues. So again, it takes a village to raise a child, and we're just very proud of, uh, the success that we've had in helping children and doing that together with not only our staff, but with our parents and community. And so we're just excited about all the partners that work with us, work with our children, the success that our kids are having in growing as scholars and readers and learners. Uh, there's so much going on at Stone Waltel, and again, we're about, uh, serving our community as well. Uh, we're a candidate IB school and, uh, we'll look for authorization in the spring of twenty twenty. So we're excited about challenging ourselves to continue to do more for our kids. One of the things that we talked about when I first arrived in twenty fifteen is that in America, it's even more difficult for an African-American child to even get into college. And why don't we having our children think about going overseas or learning abroad? Uh, why don't we expand our horizons to think bigger than even what we thought growing up? So we're so excited about challenging ourselves to create as many opportunities for our children as possible. And I think, and I'm so grateful for just even anyone to recognize what we're doing for our kids. So again, thank you, council, thank you.
One, two, and three. One, two, and three. One, two, and three. Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
They're not here yet.
Whereas under the leadership of Coach Rodden Weaver, the San Town Park Ten U Girls Youth Basketball Team had an outstanding twenty nineteen, twenty regular season with a perfect record of twelve and zeros. Whereas this dynamic team of girl athletes helped the CCYBL Ten U Girls and the District Three Ten U Girls Youth Basketball Championship. Whereas the San Town Park Ten U Girls Youth Basketball Team finished third place in the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association State Tournament at Edwards Park Community Center and lost in the final four to the city of Atlanta team. Whereas these young ladies have a grit and determination to continue to work together and are confident that they will be competing at the state level for these young ladies for their hard work, athleticism, and good sportsmanship. Whereas special thanks to Coach Pat Swanson and the San Town Park Recreation Staff, who show their untiring commitment and support to the youth in our community on a daily basis. Now therefore being resolved, that the mayor and the city council of the city of South Fulton look forward to their continued success on and off the court. And he will rather play Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty nineteen, at San Town Park Ten U Girls Basketball Team Appreciation Day in the city of South Fulton. Thank you, I, I don't know if you recall, but I brought, um, these young ladies here last year. So they're back-to-back champions too, just like the Westlake Lady Lions. Yes, exactly, so we got a strong pipeline. Um, but, um, anyway, um, I'm so excited for you, these young girls. I also have the, um, the honor of seeing them every day and feel the pride of both of the teams, so I'm very proud of them. And, um, I think Tony wanted to share a couple remarks.
First, we want to thank Coach Rodden Weaver, who's the head coach of this team. The reason they're not standing up here is as we speak, they're playing basketball right now in our spring league, which is in its playoff season. These young ladies are a really fine example of what we hope to do in Parks and Recreation. The undefeated record speaks for itself, but if you watch them practice, you see the focus and the dedication and the hard work that they put into this, and those skills don't just apply to basketball, they apply to schools and life and all the other challenges they may face, and so we want to promote that in our community in a number of different ways. I want to thank Coach Pat Swanson, who's our site supervisor at San Town. Pat cares about every child who walks through that door, and you can tell in the way that he works with families and kids, that makes a difference in the recreation center. I want to thank our mayor and council, they've always been very supportive of parks. That's not true in every city, so we're fortunate to have a council and a mayor and our leadership team in the city that has that type of vision. Lastly, I want to thank Coach Hankerson over at Westlake. On the eve of the state playoffs, she came by the recreation center before our girls left to go play at the state level and brought two of her players. So we had the undefeated Westlake Lady Lions with our undefeated Ten U Girls, and it really meant a lot to them to see their role models, uh, come by and encourage them, so we want to encourage that pipeline as well. So thanks to all of you, please continue to support our youth wherever you can, and know that there's opportunities for you and your family in the Parks and Recreation Department.
Well, um, first of all, I'd like to thank, uh, Doc for, for this wonderful proclamation. Uh, I only spoke a hundred words, so I really can't even come behind that. But, uh, she's, uh, I, 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 um, heard Catherine, um, I'm sorry, Dr. World, who all mentioned the girls in school. I just wanted to add that every last girl on their team, one hundred percent, uh, for the entire, uh, school season, they have been a hundred percent A and B on the road, so I just wanted to.
One, two, and three. One, two, and three. One, two, and three.
Okay, last question.
Next one is the unit and the adoption of council agenda.
Make a motion to accept the agenda presented.
Second.
Poppy move is second, in discussion, hearing none, all in favor, that passes.
Next we have approval of city, approval of city council meetings from April twenty-third, two thousand nineteen. Next, we have approval or city, approval of city council meeting from April twenty-third, two thousand nineteen.
I'm making a motion to approve the council meeting minutes from April twenty-third, twenty nineteen.
Second.
Probably move the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all goes in favor? That passes unanimously.
We have a public hearing. Uh, first, our first public hearing is approval of M nineteen dash oh oh one. The modification of two thousand six Z zero zero four two SF C, the bluff at Camp Creek subdivision plan. Good evening, mayor and council.
Okay, um, the item before you is um, two thousand and six D zero zero four two, council district two. As you're seeing, the property is located um, along Butler Road and Camp Creek. You're seeing the CUP and R four zoning for the site. Surrounded zonings are mixed use, R three, R four, C two, A, um, for apartments, A G one for agricultural. As you can see, the site is ninety-nine point nine eight acres, it's zoned for residential use with two hundred and forty-eight lots. There are four conditions that the applicant is requesting to amend or to modify. Um, briefly, the applicant is asking to remove the eighty lots that are required to have seventy thousand square feet. The reason for that is they're intending to increase the square footage of the home. So you're seeing for the next two items, they're increasing the uh, square footage of each home and increasing uh, requiring eighty-five to a hundred fifty-five. And then sixty to sixty-eight for homes that are going to be over twenty-four hundred. So the homes will be um, bigger than originally required. Uh, the second amendment, of course, is for uh, clerical purposes. And you do know that at one point, Fulton County was the municipality that was hearing the items. So they're asking for the actual conditions to change, say the city of South Fulton. Um, in two thousand and six, the zero zero four had a minimum lots per footage, two, a minimum lot with uh, sixty feet. They're requesting to increase the lot with um, sixty-five. They are having a, are requesting to minimize the um, front yard setback to twenty, to seventy-five. And then the last condition would be, there is a buffer. There's a fifty-foot underserved buffer and ten-foot improvement setback located on the site. And I'll go back really quickly, so you can see where that is. It's located here. This is a uh, buffer that's located here, they're asking for that to be removed so lots will be lots. Purpose of that is to connect this proposed subdivision to an area that already um, has lots there. They're trying to make this a full subdivision, so removing this helps in that. Staff recommended approval of this item, but there were some conditions that staff is recommending that follow along with the approval. The lots facing Zoya Courts should have a minimum front yard and rear setback of twenty-five. Reason for doing that is so that they can be in um, harmony with the existing homes that have already been constructed at that location. They're also asking for uh, or sorry, we're asking for the Zoya Court properties to meet the five, to remove the five-foot stagger requirement. And then also um, the third item, all lots at front Zoya Court shall have one-sided mason, masonry front, meaning brick. Uh, and then the last um, condition that staff is recommending is having a lot, one and fifteen, um, have the two-sided brick. Basically, it's because they're on the corner, one and fifteen, they have the two-sided bricks to show that the home is um, constructed with brick. So with that being said, that concludes my report, sir.
Okay, I will open it. I will open the floor. If you're, all goes in favor? If I can comment, all goes in favor to get that phone here, go on, it gets on the tab. Anybody in favor or against this?
Against.
Come on.
Yes, sir. Uh, I live off uh, Chiron Terrace. Where uh, Councilman Coon, she emails me and I email her, basically.
Excuse me, can you say your name, please?
Selena Winfield, I live off Chiron Terrace, which is zoned at Camp Creek Village. We already have several issues, it's one-way in, one-way out. I called the police three times this past weekend. Because if anybody had an event of a medical emergency, no medical, no ambulance, no fire truck could get through. No one came and regulated parking. The vendors, that's when vendor places are not required to have police to regulate traffic. It's a constant, ongoing problem every Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And right now, we only have thirty townhomes. So, and three homes. So they're building an additional thirty-six townhomes already. So with an apartment complex with one-way in and one-way out, unregulated traffic, two-way traffic plant, lack of police. And my thing is, even if the police had responded, we could have corrected the problem because they was parked on Butler Road. Sunday, tummy on a Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday, I can't not get home. My momma's eighty-six, if she have a medical event, no one can get to her. I explain that on the nine-one dispatch, they don't respond. But even beyond that, if an officer patrol the beat, they would even know once out if you come through there to see that it is an issue. But no one is patrolling the beat, I know we're getting a precinct, but would somebody be manning the precinct? Or it will just be a building that the precinct hold on with a title on it, Sand Police Precinct? So I'm, I'm totally against it. I mean, we don't have the, it's not, it's not zoned off for that many outfits.
Thank you.
Good evening. Michelle Battle with Battle Law, one West Court Square, Decatur, Georgia. Um, can we get the site plan back up on um? Oh, there you go, thank you. Um, so with regards to this project, I want a couple of things to be clear. Um, this project was approved back in two thousand and six. Um, for a two hundred and fifty-five unit subdivision with regards to um, the portion in the CUP. And the developer at that time, um, unfortunately was unable to complete the project. They um, started, um, but for reasons which we're going to assume probably had to do um, with the um, severity of some of the slopes and the grades on the site. It's a very challenging, environmentally challenging site in terms of, of the topography and uh, the rock that was on the property. And so we believe that that is probably what resulted in them not being able to um, complete the project. And so, um, this project has just literally been sitting there and these is, and this is one of the projects um, that um, the developer is looking to complete. Um, as you know, there have been so many lots after the economic downturn that were left undeveloped, and this is one of those. Um, what we are trying to do is actually improve um, the, the proposed subdivision as it was originally conceived. Um, the changes that we are recommending um, with regards to um, the items referenced by staff. Um, are really there um, to do a couple of things. One, we are looking to have larger units um, than what was originally proposed. Um, in the original um, subdivision, um, I'm sorry, in the CUP regulations, um, there was a limit of two hundred and fifty-five units. Um, there was supposed to be a certain number of lots that were between eighty lots. At or between six thousand square feet and seven thousand square feet with a minimum heated floor area of eighteen hundred square feet. We are asking for that to be eliminated. We don't want to build the smaller lots, we want to actually build larger lots. So we're asking for those eighty lots to be redispersed um, to the other two categories, which were no more than eighty-five lots. At or between seven thousand and one square feet and nine thousand square feet with a minimum heated square, uh, floor area of two thousand. And no less than sixty lots at a minimum of nine oh one and above, um, at twenty-four hundred um, square feet. And so what we've asked is to reapportion those smaller lots between the larger um, two options. And um, staff has correctly um, read what we are requesting there. That we would have no more than um, a hundred and fifty-five lots at or between seven thousand square feet and nine thousand square feet with a minimum heated floor area of two thousand. And no less than sixty-eight lots at a minimum of nine thousand square feet or larger, um, with a minimum heated floor area of twenty-four hundred. Our total lot number actually decreased from two fifty-five to two forty, well, we thought two forty-nine, but it says here two forty-eight, that's fine. To two forty-eight. So we actually lost some lots from that perspective. Um, with regards to the lot width, um, we wanted a wider lot, not a smaller lot. There was an option to have lots at sixty feet and some at sixty-five. We want to have all of them at sixty-five. So it's a wider lot and it's a bigger lot. Um, and we feel that that um, allows for a better price point um, for the overall community. With regards to the setback, I want it to be clear, we are not asking for all of the units to be at twenty. We know that we have to have a stagger. So we're going to have some at twenty and then you all required back in two thousand and six, a five-foot stagger. So that twenty allows us um, to be able to achieve that five-foot stagger. And still be compliant with the requirements that we not have cars and other things hanging out into um, the right-of-way. The reason for that is because of the topo, a lot of the rear yards are at an elevated level. So we are having um, to adjust ourselves to make sure that people have a reasonable backyard. In addition to meeting the stagger requirement. So um, we're not, again, trying to get out of that stagger requirement. We're simply trying to make sure that we have enough room on the site to provide for a suitable um, rear yard. Um, for those who will be um, living um, in the subdivision. And then with regards to the fifty-foot um, uh, transitional buffer. Uh, what you'll see is that there are lots between um, the Camp Creek project and this CUP. Uh, and they're two different CUPs, um, that we are creating these lots here, um, with the frontage at twenty-five feet. To allow for a kind of the continuity of the subdivision. This subdivision was already planned to have connectivity um, here. We're not creating something that wasn't already proposed. And then the subdivision continues down into the subdivision that is adjacent here. Um, we are um, also providing um, recreational areas um, on the site. Um, right now, it is shown as the top lot, um, and a gazebo in this area. Uh, we may come back later to actually relocate that um, to this area. And leave a, a top lot here and also um, put in an additional um, dog park and walk area um, over in this area. So that there are three different locations for um, recreation. But for purposes of today, we're leaving um, the recreational area where it is. So um, we'll come back and address that at, at a later date. But what we're hoping to achieve here, we've got um, builders who are ready to build. And so um, this project um, is under development. These are um, setback-related matters, it doesn't really impact the ability to develop the lots. These are making for a larger house and for a house that the, the builder.
And I am opposed again of this. I think the area itself is not conducive uh, with the traffic that it's going to bring and how many they. Butler Road right now, I can't even get out of my driveway as of today. And we know the projects that are ahead, uh, nowhere, I mean, it's in the distance, there's nowhere near uh, completion. But everything that is, this stands for, I'm against, like I said, the area is too small. We want a quality of life. Don't want to bring anything to us, of course, we know there's going to be, there's going to be uh, some building coming in. We want something quality, don't just throw anything down. So again, again, I am opposed of this. And I plead, ask you to, you know, shoot it out. Anywhere? Oppose? You want to rebuttal?
I want to make it clear once again, if we didn't come here today, we can still put in two hundred and fifty-five homes. We would be obligated to put in homes that are smaller than seven thousand square feet. Um, we would be obligated to have um, this diversity in the home sizes. Um, that I don't think benefits the overall community by having um, homes that are um, at that lower price point and in a smaller size. We're not asking, um, can we build two hundred and fifty-five homes? Because you all, that's already been approved. What we're asking is, can we change um, the setbacks and some of the dimensional requirements? So that we can build a better quality um, subdivision? That is the question that we're asking tonight, thank you.
Anywhere's for or against? Uh, Ms. Reed.
Yes.
Is it my understanding that, that they are now saying that setbacks are okay? I heard Michelle said.
Yes.
They all recommend the setbacks?
Yes, they are.
However, I still want you to look, look up, look in our codes or whatever.
Okay.
And I think that you would be considered all, like this, come in and, and be uh, and towards with the setback.
Okay.
The step, I want you to be, see I would be doing.
So all, they are all required to have a setback, are you speaking on the staggering piece?
Staggering, I mean.
Okay.
Staggering piece, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
For correcting.
Okay.
So she, so she said setbacks, she didn't say staggering, is that correct?
I meant, I, I meant that we are staggering. Some will be at twenty, some will be at twenty-five, so we're doing the five-foot stagger.
I want that to be on our roof, you know, to be a part of it, that she just have to be not to talk about. The other thing was um, how many lots, how many houses is it?
So two hundred and forty-eight lots is what we have.
And you, and you talking about the top lot and a gazebo?
So that would be something that the applicant has presented.
Okay, I just want to put it out there, I don't, you don't have to rebuttal, but I, I'm just not, that's a top lot, what's the price point?
Two forties and up.
Okay.
Forty to fifty is a car.
Let me get back to, let me, let me just hit something for me personally. And I'll let this go, yeah. It's going to come a time when we're going, we're going to get inundated with these two hundred thousand dollar houses. And if we want to make it to the next level in terms of economic development, we're going to have to start looking at higher price points in our city. Or a mixture of the lower price point and the higher price point. I mean, don't get me wrong, I ain't trying to be leaders or anything. You know, my house is a hundred and fifty-five dollars. That was a joke, I didn't. But anyway. Anyway, I just take some, I'm just saying this to you because at some point in time, as we look at our, you know, our housing stock. That that's going, that's going to go well tremendously.
Right, I think if I can recommend something, we're in the process of rewriting our zoning ordinance. And a lot of the design standards are in that zoning ordinance. So a lot of that could play into part of it, we were considering the re-line of that. We can include certain things that are going to enhance the um, structures.
Is it one-way in, one-way out?
It's one of the subdivision. Currently there is, if you see, there is a piece that has entrance and exit here. It goes down to, it will go down to an existing or a proposed subdivision there, and then another piece, so.
As we say today, is this a one-way?
Currently today, yes, but once it's developed, they do have other um, units.
That's problematic. Let me work it out, Michelle, I'm just.
Yes, sir.
Right now, it's problematic for me. I mean, you get that many houses. And you have one-way and one-way, one-way and one-way.
So by code is required, the number of homes that are proposed, by code, they're required to have at least a minimum of two entrances and exits.
Absolutely.
Right.
Absolutely, at the time we zone.
Correct, so they, they're, they're going to have that once they're going through the construction phase.
Okay, I'm, I'm.
So, uh, Ms. Reed, while you're here, um, in the original plans was a top lot and a gazebo in the original plan?
So what you have before you now is what we have during the time of the utility application.
Okay, so these are new additions that we're adding?
I remember what you were asking, in the original um, site plan that was approved in two thousand and six. Um, there was a um, top lot, but interestingly enough, they had it over the gas line. And we're not really sure why that was even allowed or considered. So we relocated um, the top lot into the area um, that is shown here. Now that's in the portion of the property that is zoned R four. Um, however, um, we've got um, an application before the VZA to address some issues within the context here. What our preference would be, and we do have a site plan um, that we could show, but it has not been vetted fully by staff. So in respect to them, um, we are not presenting that tonight. But we may come back to ask for the relocation. And what we're trying to do is have the top lot and the gazebo um, over in this area. And we're going to actually take out a couple of lots here. Um, have the, the, the top lot and gazebo and dog park and um, mail kiosk in this area. There'll also be a second top lot and mail kiosk in uh, the area in the R four. And then we're going to have a third area um, down where those gas lines are. Right beneath there, there'll be another like dog park and walk area um, down in that area. So there'll end up being three as opposed to what had previously been proposed, which was one large area um, that was over the gas lines in that area.
And I think when um, I guess this originally was brought up, the price points were a little bit higher when discussed, I think it was in the three hundreds.
Yeah, and I, and, and understand that usually what will happen is they'll start at around two fifty. And as the price points, as they're starting to sell lots, the unit prices will, sorry, the unit prices will continue to go up. Um, but they, they're not going to start at three and go from there, is my understanding. And some of that is market-driven because right now, there's a lot of um, activity in the market for that price point. But what I can tell you is, if we stuck with the current um, conditions. I can tell you that that price point would be lower because we have those houses that are eighteen hundred. I can tell you that that price point would be lower because we have those houses that are eighteen hundred square feet from, that are between, that are under seven thousand square feet. Those units between six and seven. So we would be looking at probably an even lower price point for those. So our hope is that by building a bigger house, not hope, but we know that by building this bigger house, we will be consistent with the homes that are being built in the area. I know that Century is completing a project. And this project will ultimately connect, there'll be connectivity in those three different locations so that there's flow. This is not a cul-de-sac community that's all by itself. But there's intended to be continuity throughout the community so that there's more than one way in and out.
So as, as you know, in the residential vision, I live right behind this community.
I'm very aware of that.
So I am very aware of the traffic concerns, the issues, everything that these residents are experiencing, I experienced on the damn business. So one of my concerns is the amount of houses now that you are building back there. And the luxury of us being a new city is that we get to take a step and look at what we really want back there.
Okay.
Um, my biggest thing right now is that it was written in two thousand and six and our community has dramatically changed since two thousand and six. And I've shared this with Director Reed on a lot of occasions where we've had developers come in and say, "Well, it was approved in Fulton County in two thousand and six." Well, we're in two thousand and nineteen and there's tons of people that live on that side of the street.
Yes, ma'am.
And you got horses, you got a whole lot of stuff that's happening over there in that corridor that I, I am not too convinced that is ready for that. We need a traffic analysis. Maybe if we can recommend a traffic study because we have been talking about presenting legislation for these developers that have had stagnant properties and they wanna come in and start building based on Fulton County. So I think, you know, a traffic study would probably be most appropriate for that area. I'm not too, I'm concerned about the community outreach because I didn't get notified about anything. And I'm not sure if this is the one where they sent out a notice and it was on Old National.
Right.
Our people are not gonna come to a meeting over there.
We actually did send out a second notice and we had a meeting at the, there was a church on Butler. Not Butler, I apologize, the one street over from Butler.
Oh, Camp Creek.
Right. And unfortunately, we still didn't get a better response. We sent it out to the list that staff provided us with. You know, with regards, respectfully with regards to this project, because they are already under development, the land development permits have already been pulled, they are already pushing dirt around. This project, whether we get these amendments or not, it's, it's happening because it's already, it is already approved. And if we developed consistent with the currently approved zoning conditions, we can continue as we are. Because again, it was zoned and we're zoning consistent with that plan right now. What we're trying to achieve is to reduce some of these unit size, I mean, to increase the unit size and make for a better product. I think if there's an opportunity for us to continue to work cooperatively with the city to address some of the concerns, we want to do that. And yet at the same time, there are time pressures on the fact that they're already out there moving dirt. They don't want this to become, you know, part two of the same situation that happened before.
So and I, and I completely understand that and that's the same song we dance that a lot of the developers are giving us, that this was here before. And whether you like it or not, this is gonna happen. But my issue is that we want quality. We want, we want our quality of life improved, so we just can't accept everything. So just let me make a motion to just table it for right now so we can have a little bit of further discussion. And you have some things to move forward, just, just at that point and we can...
I'll probably move to second and further discussion. Mr. Colley?
While, while we're tabling, I just, I just wanted to ask there, 'cause I have been to a party back there and, uh, those houses. But that's a lot of houses and parking was a problem even at the party out there. So I'm just wondering, have you thought about adding any additional guest parking anywhere in your plan so that people are just not parking on the street? Or widening the street so that people could park on both sides of the street and still have vehicles get back in?
Well, then hopefully that'll be covered in the traffic study that will be proposed that we have talked to them about. But I would like to continue listening to you between you.
We're still, we're still in discussion.
Okay.
We're still in discussion. Mr. Baker, you was in the queue before it started.
Actually, I had, I had one more question. My last question was, when would, the plan shows that there are other exits. When would you build the exits, I can't remember.
They're, they're, they're being built as we speak. So the entrance point here is already under construction. As they, as, as they are coming down into this area, they will connect into the existing street so that there is interparcial connectivity with the other adjacent subdivisions. And then the same, as they are developing this component, they will develop into connection with the subdivision that's beneath here. So if someone's up here, there's blockage here, they can actually get out of the subdivision going through other subdivisions to be able to exit, which is different than in a lot of places where you have cul-de-sac communities. So once you come in, if, if you are stuck, you can't go to, you can't get out any other way because everything is a cul-de-sac. But these are connecting streets.
There you go.
So let me, let me, can I do my motion? Can I be said, I need to be said in there.
Mr. Baker, we'll have you, and then Councilman Brown, and then we'll end with Councilwoman Baker.
Well, my only concern was what the residents state regarding EMS services. And so that turnaround time and trying to find a way to reroute, given the number of houses should be considered. I didn't hear you in your rebuttal say anything to adjust the safety issue. So I, since it seems like it's gonna be tabled, it's just something I want, I would like to see considered.
One thing I would like to point out is that with regards to access points, you know, we only own, can I just say, we only own what we own, so to speak. And so the ability to connect and put more traffic in another location back out onto Butler Road really becomes about the only option because that's the only thing, the other thing that we're butting here. So we're talking about, you know, putting traffic still on the same street. Whereas what's happening now is the, the interconnectivity allows folks to get out at other points. But I, I hear what, I, I, I'm very clear on what you all are saying, which is you have a grave concern about the, the traffic and the ability to maneuver through and to make sure that, you know, safety is a priority and, and we understand that. Again, you know, we came for you all to try and get some relief with regards to the, to the setbacks and the like. And the developer will have to figure out what they want to do because again, they're under some, some fairly serious time crunches right now. And we've been delayed a couple of months, a couple of times on this application, so.
Okay, Ms. Brown, and then Ms. Giddy out to us.
Really quick, looking at this, this is a hundred-acre site. All I heard was a focus on tot lots and dog parks. Everybody is not a dog lover and those kids grow up. So I, I do think developer should look at a different kind of amenities package. As you see, it's under the weather. That's a lot of that scene prepared, you know. And besides the homes, you know, you'd like to have children, families. So I think that should really be looked at.
And definitely with that being an entertainment district, I mean, you know, you have tots and you got clubs and there, there's too much going on. But anyway, I'm...
I just wanted to say, I was really gonna say the same thing that Dr. Brown said. Because there are too many subdivisions that are being built, you know, two hundred and above, some with no amenities whatsoever. And a tot lot is something very, very small. It's not really gonna be functional. And, and subdivision of that size, and we have families moving in with kids that don't have anything to build. And then in January, February, and March, you can't go to the gazebo. And maybe if the weather stays the way it is, it might be September. So I think the developer needs to give some more consideration to amenities.
I think the challenge is, you know, when we get outside of kind of the park-ish kind of area and then we start to get into things, you know, I, my assumption is we're not talking about, for some homeowners, it's not necessarily attractive to have like basketball courts and things of that nature within the subdivision. But we will, again, we will work with Councilmember Bounce to, to address these issues and try and come up with something, I guess.
Finally, okay, so I want to amend my motion. I would like for us to table this until May twenty-eighth with a request for a traffic study. May twenty-eighth for a traffic study, I would love that.
We can't do a traffic study in, that's less than three weeks. At most, we can get some trip generation information.
I know, never mind. So you wanna move it to...
Okay, we actually have a traffic study, so I can...
From where? Not two thousand and six?
Last year.
Well, you can present the, I'd like to see it.
Okay.
Um, also too, making sure that we have some more community outreach. And I know you can do that within...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That is on this side of town?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so that's my motion.
It's already the second. All those in favor? That passes unanimously.
Mayor, can we start using the voting key? Because last, yeah, can we start using the voting key?
All right, go ahead.
Counsel, this item also includes property of the same location, so I'm gonna recommend the same recommendation. The same decision.
Do I need to make a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Do I like to make a motion to table this along with the previous item to make to me?
I'll remove the second and any discussion. Hear none, all those in favor, that passes unanimously.
All right.
Okay. This item in nineteen zero zero three is a modification request of two thousand and fifteen. We zone in zero zero three of fifty-six twenty Old National Highway located in District Six. The property is located here on Old National, showing the site is surrounded by other commercial areas and the agriculture and apartment zoning qualifications. The property is one point four six acres and is commercial, we zone and is undeveloped.
That talk in the last couple of months about redeveloping Old National was truly legitimate. It was the biggest wake-up call I ever saw on social media from all the comments that came about this community. You know, Commissioner Darnell, when she talked about the woods and the dark and, and those affected, that was outstanding. But there was another commissioner that said something very great also that really comes to bear. Government will fail you. And the state of this community, Old National validates it. All of those comments were based mostly upon socio-economic problems, mostly economic. You know, the woke ones in this community always come up and speak. When land use issues come up, we saw a lack of diversity and a lack of balance in this community. That's why laws were put into place. Fifty-four oh-three Old National Highway. Six zero five five Old National Highway. Six three eight five Old National Highway. Seven four nine zero Old National Highway. Do you know that these addresses are the exact same company, Family Dollar? And that doesn't include the rest of the discount stores in this car. This area is totally exasperated. Last month, we had a grand opening. Goodwill. Goodwill is now the anchor of the second newest shopping plaza on Old National. Allowing Habitat for Humanity to violate city policy puts a ball on the slave chain that's already on this community. Old National suffers with duplicity. There is no justifiable rationale to grant this modification. And don't let money come in because finance cannot be used in a land use process. There are no product projects within the city proper that Habitat is using, that's working on. You've got two street-facing lots that are now gonna be turned to a nonprofit. And we talk about an economic engine on Old National. Habitat is a great place, great nonprofit, stores are probably fantastic. I love big lots. Spend the whole day in there. But big lots cannot come to Old National because it's already over-exasperated with these types of problems. You know, we just talked about the home prices in the last case, that we need to change and bring those up. Councilman Willis had an event in her, in her neighborhood. I went over there. There was a tire repair shop at every single intersection on that corner. You go to Old National, two McDonald's, two Burger Kees, Crystal, Checkers, Yocum Chicken, Kentucky Fried Chicken, Churchill's Chicken, Popeye's Chicken, Bojangles Chicken, Zaxby's Chicken. Every single solitary thing over there is for that. See, I am urging you to deny this modification because if you stand for nothing, you fall for everything. So let's get up off of the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Alvin Reynolds and I reside in District Seven. I also am against this approval of this modification for economic reasons. Also, lifting this modification, you will tend to open the gateway for discount malls, something that the Old National area has been dealing with for years. And we are trying to change the dynamics and the look of the Old National area. We speak highly, and Mayor yourself in your State of the City address spoke highly of redeveloping Old National. And I really am concerned about this type of development going forward and what it may bring and open the gateway to. Thank you.
Further against? You're against or for? For.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Wesley Brooks. I'm the Vice President of Housing and Area Engagement for Habitat for Humanity Atlanta. I appreciate the comments from the audience. I know that when you hear the name Habitat for Humanity, quality is not what you hear about. I find it interesting, we opened talking about the lesser of us today in this meeting. It was a fantastic sermon, there were phenomenal words. And then what I hear in the audience is, I don't care if you serve the lesser of us. I don't care if Habitat's mission is to make sure that people have a safe, decent place to live because Habitat for Humanity isn't good for Old National. Excuse me, sorry. It, it struck a nerve, so forgive me for that. The reason we don't have homes right now that we're working on, we're not doing any critical repairs, we're not doing any new builds, is because we don't have an operations center in the city of South Fulton, in South Fulton County. We don't have one. We have one currently existing off of Memorial Highway in the city of Atlanta in the neighborhood of Reynolds Town, which I know if there's a concern with home prices, I'll tell you that homes in Reynolds Town are going for six and seven hundred thousand dollars. Habitat for Humanity did not bring down that neighborhood, we brought it up. We have homes in that neighborhood that were built for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and have been resold for three and four hundred thousand dollars to those families. That's wealth building. That's what we bring to a community. That's what we're here for, that's what we will do in the city of South Fulton. We will comply with all of the building requirements, all of the landscaping requirements, all of the facade requirements of the city. We're not asking for any variance on that. We're saying let us serve the lesser of us, the way that we have always done. Thank you.
Anyone else for or against?
Good evening. My name is Glenn Collins, District Five, Morning Creek Drive. My concern about Habitat for Humanity. We had a house that was constructed on a vacant lot. And it was a nice house, everything looked great. And it was a nice house. Everything looked great. But the person that chose the house from Habitat, said they chose it because the community looked good. But in the end process, there was some violence at the house, and the house was shot up. Now, I have concerns about that, and they said the people were vetted, even though this did happen. So I have deep issues with Habitat coming in the community, building these houses. Thank you.
Okay, four minutes and thirty seconds. If that's only against, right?
Since Michael Fenneco District Six, let me just clarify some things. This has nothing whatsoever to do with Habitat for Humanity. This is a land use zoning issue. The law states that we do not have discount stores on this property. Okay? That's all that says in there. The problem is, you have to have an extenuating circumstance not to do that. Been around for a while, so I'll give you an example. Before Bannock was in Yingon City, was unincorporated. They built a new school. They had to build a new school, they had to encroach on the stream buffer. You know, everybody talks about environmental in there, but I didn't see too many people at that meeting, but you know, I'll let that pass. Do you know what the extenuating circumstance is? If you had not been able to build that school, you would have had to tear down the original school. You will have to find a place to put all the children. You would have had total chaos in the whole process. That's an extenuating circumstance. There is no extenuating circumstance here to violate this ordinance. We have a problem on this car. It could be Joe's Discount Shop. It could be City Council's Discount Shop. It's nothing to do with Habitat for Humanity. This is a bigger issue than is beyond that. Like I said, we need to deny this petition.
Once again, Alvin Reynolds, and I have to concur, and let me say that it is not meant or said that I'm against Habitat for Humanity. The great work that they do is exceptional. But this is bigger than Habitat for Humanity. This is dealing with land use and zoning. Because if we continue to alter the laws that govern us today, we're going to open the gateway for much, much, much more things to come that we won't have control over in the future. I have lived in this area for over twenty years. I've been standing before council and commissioners before. Some of you know about some of these very things. So we are just trying to change the dynamic and to change the direction in which we're going. This is not a slight against Habitat for Humanity. This is not the issue. And the case that came before us, Alvin can sit here and state it that no matter what, we're going to do it anyway. So if that's where we are, we should have been dealing with these types of things when you guys first took office. And so since that didn't take place, and here we are now. So we have to take a look, a solid look at what's going on with these things. Again, not against Habitat for Humanity. This is a bigger issue than that. Thank you.
Wesley Brooks, Habitat for Humanity. Just a clarification. When this property was rezoned originally to where it is now, it was actually rezoned in order to put a car lot there. It was one of the last places on Old National where you can actually place a car lot. So when we purchased it, we actually demoed the existing structure that was there, where there was a used car lot on the site. And when it was rezoned, that's when they put in the no-discount retail language. And I think, I think that the residents are correct. We've got the opportunity to do something great with Old National. I think that, you know, we're not building a chicken place, right? We're not, we're not building a Family Dollar. We are building an operations center, much like the one that we already have. You all have, some of you have visited that location. You've walked the site. We provide quality products. We allow retail. We are tax-paying retail, we are a tax-paying retail location that will be on Old National if approved. We contribute to the greater good of that commercial corridor. And I understand that we are a nonprofit, that there are some connotations that go with that. But we consider ourselves a community resource. We do critical repairs for seniors. We do new builds for new construction of homes for first-time home buyers. We do community training. We do homeowner training for how to take care of your home. And I think the service that we provide the community goes far beyond just the fact that we're providing retail on Old National. That will be there as well, but this is our new operations center for the entire, to serve the entire area of South Fulton. So I just wanted that to be clarified for the group.
Thank you.
I'm going to close the public hearing. Mr. Khalid?
Um, because I support this, and I'm a twenty one. We have so many blighted houses in the city of South Fulton and off of Old National. And when I was first introduced to this, I was at a Fairwood Homeowners Association meeting. And the lady, the question that I posed to her was about the current homes that were just left. And nobody's doing anything with them. So versus them coming in, building the smaller homes that they continually build, what they're saying, what I was told, was they would come in and renovate the homes that have been left, the brick homes that have been left. Is that, is that, am I hearing this correctly?
Yes, ma'am. So one of the things that we do is not just new construction and empty lots, but we do, specifically brick homes, these homes that have good bones can be revitalized. For us, that's fantastic because that's much more, much less expensive than building a new house. So we will come in, do an assessment, and see if we can rehab that house and put it back on the market.
But basically, this would build up our neighborhoods. If we ride through Old National now, not even if we're talking about economic development, let's be real. If you have a developer that's coming in, he's going to ride these neighborhoods, okay? And when he rides, when he sees these boarded-up homes falling down, do you think he's going to put something down? Let's be real. You know, I'm just talking. And that's, my thing is, whatever I can do to try to build up that area, and especially my, I mean, I'm not talking about six and seven, I'm talking about five right now. Because we have a lot of homes that have boards up to the windows and overrun grass, that type of thing. So if this is something that will be able to help us to build up our community, I'm for it. The ones I was not able to go to, they had a walkthrough or something, we went to the other one. But my understanding is, they're beautiful. I mean, not beautiful, but they're very nice. And what I'm asking is, whatever you do, if you can make it appealing to curb appeal, nice on Old National. That's what we need. What I'm saying is, something that's going to come in and bring and help us build up their communities, we need all the help we can get. And I hear you all clapping, saying no to this, that, and the other, but who's going to come in here and build some houses right now? Can anybody come in that's in the audience? I hear you. But do we have anybody that can say that they'll come in and we have some of the houses, and we have a lot in District Five? I beg your pardon. But anyway, I'm on District Five, and I know right now, we need all that we can get. And I promise you, I'm not going to try to bring anything in that's going to tear us down.
Mr. Khalid?
Thank you. Yeah, we did, we did have to move it. And you all did a presentation a couple of months ago. I do want to say that my phone number is four oh four five four five thirty-nine hundred. It's in all my newsletters. It's on my website. I hope that when we have development issues like this, the first time I'm hearing from my constituents isn't in a public meeting because you all have my number. And I do think that this is a, that this is a great project. And the programs that you have, reaching out to the community, I think are very, very important. So I want to make a motion to go ahead and approve this.
I'll remove the second discussion. I have Ms. Gums.
Thank you.
Hello.
So I have a question. How many jobs would you estimate will be coming to the community based off of you locating in South Fulton?
So that will vary based on how much traffic comes in the store. Of course, our current restor has about nine full-time employees. Most of those are entry-level jobs, and then we have volunteer opportunities as well, Habitat's models to work on volunteers, work with volunteers. So we at any time have ten to twenty volunteers in the store at one time.
So I've been to your location off of Reynolds Town. And you all open your buildings to community meetings and things of that nature as well. You plan to do that same model?
Yes, ma'am. There's a community space, actually, that's in there, that's in the design, and it's made for, right now, we open our space up to other nonprofits, community meetings, other organizations that are doing like-minded work. If they need space to do a symposium, we've got some folks in the audience who've actually used that before, and we'll do the same thing at this location.
So I know I was speaking with one of the councilmen today, and is there a possibility that you could partner with the city as far as maybe possibly bringing a business incubator on that side of town or something of that nature where, you know, the business community as well can kind of take advantage of using that space if it is approved?
This is the first that I've heard of that, but we pride ourselves on strategic partnerships. If someone's doing like-minded work, they want to do community development work, we find a way. It's my job, actually, to find a way to have, how to work with them and support what they do and what we do. So we're certainly open to any of that.
So maybe Councilman Khalid and Mr. Baker, I can kind of talk about it possibly if this is understood over on that side of the division.
Councilwoman Willis?
Yes, a class where they bring them in, and they teach people how to make repairs, how to take care, basic repairs, and so that's what we need. And I, they also, I went over to the retail store and saw some of the furniture items that were being sold. And they have some quality stuff in this retail store. So I don't know, but Habitat for Humanity, I would just encourage you to try to figure out how you can, you know, get more positive narratives about Habitat for Humanity. Because until I did that tour, I thought the same thing that a community is coming up here saying. And so I just think you all need to do a better job of doing that. But this is not only going to be a good thing for Old National, it's going to be a good thing for the city. We impaired to over two hundred blighted properties from Fulton County. Citywide, we have, that list has increased now that we have code enforcement going out and enforcing code and doing more inspections. So we have over two hundred, am I correct, has that list increased? It has increased. We have over two hundred blighted properties in this city. And if Habitat for Humanity can come in and rehab some of those properties, if it's feasible for them, I think that's a win-win for the city.
We're going to have Mr. Khalid, and we're going to enter Mr. Baker.
I do want to say we did visit Reynolds Town, and that is a slightly more urban environment than at Old National. So I understand that's a story. So as you're just landscaping and designing the store, I hope you will keep that in mind.
Absolutely.
And then lastly, I will say, I did hear, we had like two dramatically different sort of developments tonight. And I heard a public comment kind of crossing and conflating one set of developments with another. One of the things I do hear is this anxiety around property values. I, I hope that this same, this same push for higher property values, I hope that we will continue to see that in January when your property tax notices come out. But I do think one of the ways that we haven't talked about raising property values is reexamining our fee schedule. I know that that's something that we haven't done yet, and I do hope that maybe in Arizona, we write it somewhere that we do that as well.
Okay, Mr. Baker?
Lastly, I would like to disagree with everybody that said, you know, it's Councilwoman Willis, to Jackson and Councilman Khalid and Gums. But I just want to add that we have to do a better job with communicating directly with each other, meaning our constituents in our offices. I attended the meeting as well. I like the stat that you pointed out as far as the property values of what you did when you came to say the community. And I just want to note for our public at that meeting that we all attended, where we're sharing this information, that you guys may have those negative narratives in your head regards to Habitat for Humanity. Just know that that was a public meeting, which means people from our community were invited to come to that meeting. There was a notice out, and I think that you guys should take advantage of those things. And even if you miss it, call our numbers so we can converse, you know, about it before we come here and some of the contingent, you know, so that it could be gathered.
All right, there's a motion on vote in second. I think it's for approval. Am I correct?
Yes.
All right, let's vote. That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next?
Next is public comments. Speakers can complete, I'm sorry, speakers will be granted a toll of two minutes each, and public comments will not exceed thirty minutes. Speakers will not be allowed to yield or donate their time to other speakers. Speakers must identify themselves and their address as prior to speaking. Speakers may only address the presiding officer. Shall observe all rules of decorum. No debate, disrespect, or obscenities shall be tolerated. The presiding officer shall rule any such individual out of order that fails to comply with the foregoing. Please line up as I call your names. We have twelve cars. First is Taylor Lumenthal, Kim King, Natasha Williams, and Deborah Dugan.
Correct.
Good evening. My name is Natasha Williams. I reside at twenty-eight twenty Sapphire Street in the Old National Corridor. Councilman Khalid is my councilman. And first, I'd like to start by thanking him for inviting me to address the full council. This has been quite an instructive experience, given that I am here to bring to the council's attention a situation that I've brought to the attention of my councilman. Namely, that for the past several months, I have been increasingly inundated by mail, which escalated to phone calls, which eventually culminated with a phone call to me at my job by property flippers wanting to sell my house. So it's very interesting to sit and hear that there are these two very different narratives happening between Camp Creek, where my daughter attends school at Westlake, and Old National Highway, where I live around the corner from Councilman Khalid. Because there is apparently quite a bit of interest in buying my property in the Woodward State subdivision. I apologize for not having the copies of the letters with me. I have, however, shared with Councilman Khalid two instances via text message, including a phone message last Wednesday night at seven-thirty from someone calling me during dinner wanting to buy my house. Today, I received an email from LendingTree apprising me of the value of my property and that I have sixty thousand dollars worth of equity in my home. And please consider taking out a loan from us for home improvements. I am not sure, Councilman Jackson, what all has been going on, as I expressed to Councilman Khalid, but I stand before you today to let you know that there is indeed quite a bit of interest in the Old National Corridor, in getting hands on the properties on the Old National Corridor. And I would invite the council to please look into this more carefully because I am increasingly suspicious of why my little starter house on Sapphire Street is of such interest to all of these people who seem to want to get it very desperately. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kimberly King. I live in District Two of the city of South Fulton. I'm here to talk to you, as my shirt says, about the Divine Nine-Five King. I'm here to talk to you as my shirt says about the Divine nine-five K. On June the eighth, we will host the Fourth Annual Divine nine-five K Race. We have already surpassed six hundred registrants and we're hoping to get to one thousand. It's important to us that we get that number because from the proceeds of that race, which is sponsored by the National Panellody Council of Greater Atlanta, we're able to award scholarships to students in our community and support community programs. But let me pause and say, we wouldn't be here, I wouldn't be standing here today without the support of Councilwoman Willis, without the support of South Fulton Parks led by my Georgia Bulldog brother Tony Phillips and many other South Fulton citizens and staff and the entire council in Fulton County, so we thank you very much for your support. We really appreciate that and we are, thanks to you, we're quickly becoming one of the South Side's largest and most funded races in my opinion. The other thing I just want to share about what we do, we are very purposeful in how we spend our money, we work hard to support local businesses. As an example, all, if you quit, when, not yet, but when you participate, the fruit that you will eat after your race will come from Simply Produce, a South Fulton business. We support local businesses in terms of other things that we do and we are fortunate to receive board, excuse me, support from one of the mayor's favorite places, Cigaro's, Greystone Power, Infinity of South Atlanta. We don't like Cigaro's mayor, I'm not talking about, yeah, but it's a great place, great local owned business, locally owned business, Infinity of South Atlanta, it's a great time and we want, and we don't want you to miss it, so I want everybody to be here. I already have, I had a chance to speak to my childhood friend, Mr. Selby, he's gonna help get the Omega numbers up, the Omega Psi Phi numbers. Councilman Baker, need your help with the Crimson and Cream Brothers and the sororities are doing it, so three cheers for the Deltas and AKs, we're number one so far. So that's it, thank you very much and I'll see you on June the eighth and welcome our heart. Divine nine-five K dot com, thank you.
Next.
Good evening, I'm Deborah Dunn, again, I live on eighty-ten Odo Road. I am here tonight to discuss the Bishop Road burning dump. I was transferred down here in nineteen ninety-one and I chose this area because it was clean, beautiful, and quiet, but since that time, a lot of things have changed and of course, the unpermitted dump was allowed to build and now we have this burning dump. The smoke has affected a lot of people in our area and also while this was going on, Palmetto could not afford a sewage plant, so the meeting we had and of course, we got outvoted and now I have a sewage line running through my yard. And we were also promised that the sewage would not smell, so now I'm in between the stinking sewage and the burning dump. So definitely we need to stop this gentleman from allowing to continue his dump after, it's gotta be cleaned out, we gotta stop it, shut him down, because this is something that's affecting everybody's health in our area. It's even affected me and I don't even know how the people around this area, the dumpings existing, can continue to live there, I mean, it's just horrible. So I'm asking that, you know, we please push to get this dump stopped now, not in the June or May, September down the road, now. We don't need a year of waiting to get this thing cleaned up and I'm, thank you for your time. Hi, Deborah Blumenthal.
My name is Taylor Blumenthal, I live in District Four. I'm here to talk about the illegal dump also. I know the city is new, I understand the city is large and has different needs in different places. I can only speak to what I've seen in my immediate community. I, I know that the city of South Fulton inherited this problem, that's not my concern. My concern is only what happens next. It seems unthinkable to me that someone with this particular dump operator's history would be allowed to do business in this city ever again. We're talking about a low-level bad actor illegally dumping in plain sight with a documented history of violation after violation, ultimately poisoning South Fulton's air and property. If the city doesn't have the teeth to prevent this from happening again, I don't see how it could be an inherited problem anymore, it's just a problem. Thank you for listening.
Please line up as I call your name, Michael Shapie, Bailey Bartos, Gina Yilding, and it just, Carter Simpson Jane.
Go ahead, sir.
Hello, my name is Michael Shapie and I live at seventy-five twenty-five Hopgood Road in District Four. Thank you for having the time in your agenda to, Mayor and council members, to hear what we have to say and especially, thank you, Naima Gillier, you have helped coordinate activities to try to get state attention to this issue of the illegal dump fire on Bishop Road. Tandy Bullock, he's also known as Ross Bullock, he has numerous aliases, is operating an illegal dump within the city limits of South Fulton. AKA, Tandy Bullock needs a City of South Fulton business license and permits to operate such a facility. Our intent is to work with this council, work with the city officials, government, city government officials, to see that such authorization is not granted. To operate a landfill, you have to have site and engineering plans, you have to have monitoring of air and water, you have to have inspections, you have to have, you have to account for the materials that are deposited in the area, you have to have a plan for the closure of such a facility. He has none of these. He has been operating illegally for numerous years, he has been cited numerous times and he is in violation of state environmental regulations, EPA, EPA rules. I hope the fire is out and, because then the next tougher stage will take place and that is to remove this facility. He is in violation of Section four oh four of the Clean Water Act, that the dump sits right on top of a waterway. We've contacted the Army Corps of Engineers and we plan to have this material removed using violation of numerous laws. Again, he is, he's going to court on May twentieth and then this, this group will be faced with that decision.
Next up on the list, same deal, we're worried about this landfill. What I'm giving, can you please say your name? Sorry, yes, Elizabeth Bartos, I live in District Four, Lima is our council person who's working with us. And what I'm most concerned about right now is on May twentieth, this man goes to court, another trial, and what's going to happen at that trial? I'm afraid his lawyers are going to once again state that he's doing everything in his power to fix the problem and that may be true, but he can't fix it and the reason is, he's not qualified. Now, Waste Management has on their website, "Recent research reveals a worrying lack of understanding by licensing authorities of their role in fire risk reduction together with a lack of landfill fire competency by site operators and emergency services. The means to reduce the environmental and financial impacts of a fire must be incorporated within site plans to include both technical design and site operating procedures. Tangible and intangible costs of a fire can be significantly reduced by forward planning." We need forward planning. The number one form of planning right now would be that you should seize his property to take that money and put it towards a green space because obviously, you're never going to be able to sell this property for development, it's trashed. It's potentially, should be added to the city's bladed property list, of which you already have plenty. So we are very concerned what's going to happen on the twentieth. If the judge decides that he's put the fire out, based on what? Nobody is allowed on the site to investigate the property. How will you know?
I'm Gina Yilding, I live in District Four. I'm here tonight to let you know that the dump on Bishop Road has ruined our community. Mr. Bullock is to have the fire out before Monday, May twentieth and hopefully that'll happen, we'll check to see if that's accurate or not. So far, from what I've witnessed myself, it is not out, it continues to smoke every single day. But the damage that he has caused our community has already been done. The lake adjacent to his property has been there since the sixties, the lake that was used for baptisms for our church that's in the neighborhood. Local children were allowed to play around the lake, swim, fish, the lake where my son fished with his dad, the lake where my son taught his children and my grandchildren how to fish. The lake that Mr. Goddard built with such pride and hard work. Is it safe now? We know that the runoff from the water, rain chemicals from the illegal dump has flowed into the lake. And did it go further? Because the lakes have dams, they overflow, they go downstream, so downstream is another swamp area, there's another river, or stream right there, Bear Creek is right there. We don't know either if it's even safe to grow a garden, we've had a garden since we've lived at our home just about every single year. And if we do decide to have a garden, is it gonna be safe for our grandchildren to be able to eat anything out of it? Mr. Bullock apparently thinks he is getting his license back. From what I understand, he's already come and tried to get permits and licensing already. Today, when I was at the property, there was a gentleman there that was there to discuss doing business at that property. So apparently, I don't know if Mr. Bullock is thinking he's gonna be reopening or if he has some idea that it's gonna happen.
Thank you ma'am. You're ready? Make your name, sir.
I'm Jane Shapie and I'm from District Four and first of all, I'd like to thank all of you, Mayor Edwards and the honorable council people. I know this is difficult for you to sit with after we can hear us, but you are our first line of defense and we trust you to help us. I'd also like to thank Mr. Mullins with Code Enforcement for being so help unavailable. I'd like to thank Mr. Pike and Ms. Reed for being, for assisting me in the last couple of weeks whilst I've got to get more information about this place. But today I'm here because my concern is that Chief Butler has been tasked with assignment to give a report to Judge Russell in Superior Court on May twentieth to say if the fire's out or not. I asked him how to explain as a fire specialist that he would determine if the fire is out because it's so far underground and he said what he would do is go on the property at least a couple of times and use the fire department's thermal imaging scanner to see what the temperature is on the top of the mound compared to some, to ground level far off. I was shocked to discover this week that he hasn't even been allowed on the property due to the restraining order, even though the Superior Court ordered that he do this assessment. As I stood outside tonight before the meeting, I talked with Chief Butler and he said that the negotiations are starting to take place with Mr. Bullock's attorney to hopefully and finally allow professional to come onto the property. But what I'm asking tonight is that if these negotiations do not materialize or they do not provide sufficient and multiple access to that site to do a professional assessment and a thorough report, this needs to be communicated with Judge Russell before May twentieth. The city of South Fulton and the EDP will be putting our health at risk if this fire assessment is not done according to the professional firefighting protocols. Again, I want to thank all of you for listening to us again and again.
Thank you so much.
Kalina Winfield, Raymond Puriford. I can't read this writing, is, the first name starts with a Z, the second, the last name starts with an R. Carolyn Stevens, Roberto Young.
Are you Mr. Young?
I am.
Mr. Young, whoever comes first, make your name.
It doesn't matter.
All right, cool.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council and staff, my name is Roberto W. Youngs and I am a volunteer baseball coach with Santown Park Youth Sports Association. We serve, educate, and empower more than three hundred and fifty youth through sport, through the sport of baseball here in the South Fulton community at Santown Park. We would like to first sincerely thank Councilwoman Catherine Foster-Rawl for listening to our concerns and taking prompt action on them. On Saturday, April twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen, we had an unfortunate and unforeseen safety risk issue at Santown Park where an irresponsible and disrespectful parent brandished a fire on them during the course of an actual gank with five-year-old and six-year-old children and their parents. Additionally, we were having court break-ins on a regular, especially during Saturday gang days. The coaches, the parents, and park association bonded together for positive action and since having the presence of the city of South Fulton law enforcement, we have noticed a decrease in crime over the past two weeks. So we thank you all once again for service, leadership, and prompt and positive action. Moving forward, we have some basic maintenance requests that we would like for the mayor of the council to consider during appropriations of the budget. These agenda items are not in any priority and consist of the following. Playground refresh, field maintenance, regular mowing, dirt refresh, field lights, pitching mounds, field netting needs repair, pavilion roofing repair, general landscaping, replacement of wooden walkways to concrete, shading elements near the, needed for the bleachers, updated concession stands, additional baseball fields. So currently we have, all right, so we look forward to partnering with you all to ensure a safer, productive environment for the three hundred and fifty youth families that we work with so that we can provide a thriving, flourishing, productive citizens here in South, city of South Fulton.
Good evening. Good evening, my name is Raymond Puriford, stay at seventy-seven Hopgood Road. While I am in agreement and on the side of everyone who complained about the dump, I feel like I need to bring forth, while I got this opportunity, the attention of another monster that is attacking our particular neighborhood and that is the commercial trucks on our residential streets. Now they started to use Hopgood Road as a cut-through from South Fulton Parkway to twenty-nine for the dump and for the other truck and now we have this huge trucking industry that's about to open up right, right down the street from us. And I would ask this council to be out front and coming up with something to prevent this from happening because it is gonna, we've got children, people walking on the street, there's a bridge there right at Bear Creek, they're destroying that bridge and it's gonna be a tragic happening before somebody does something about it. But that's a, that's a, it's a problem, once this trucking company opens up, that's gonna be their first term, whether it's gonna take signage before they get on the street because we have signs, some, some small signs, but you don't see those signs until after the vehicle's already on the street. So we need something before they turn down off of Highway twenty-nine or off of South Fulton Parkway on, onto Hopgood Road to stop this before it happens.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, I'm Carolyn Stevens and I'm the editor on Cheryl Lynn Lane and I want to talk about Burdette Gym and Future Seekers. My granddaughter goes to McNair Middle School and they had a beautiful program, an after-school program for the kids to go to after-school so the parents could pick them up, they're all, so it was supposed to have a summer camp program. I understand that the summer camp program... I understand that the summer camp program has been discontinued at Burdette, and it would be at Krill Park, and that the after-school program is in jeopardy. My concern is that these kids, at middle school age, is really age where they need guidance the most. They don't need to be in the streets, running around and what have you, and the program has been discontinued. I think that before it's discontinued, if there's some issues, they should make sure that they're factual. And instead of discontinuing the program, look and see how they could fix it, because these kids have nowhere to go. And so they're in the street, it's too much crime. McNair has one of the lowest scores in Fulton County, and these Future Seekers are really helping these kids with their homework and their math and all of the things that can help them bring up the scores. And so I'm asking that they revisit their program and have something for these kids to go to. I know it's too late for the summer program, but at least in August, that they have that program back intact for these kids to go somewhere after-school, then roam in the streets and be at home alone. That's it.
This one, too? Next up, we have Kathy Butler, Eric Con Riley.
Good evening, Mayor Edwards and City of South Fulton Council members. I'm Marie Yon Riley, and I'm a representative for Future Seekers. We were founded in 2001, and we provide after-school and summer programs for teens. Our mission is to provide a positive direction for today's youth by constructing and implementing programs to address their needs and prepare them for the future. During the last school year, which is 2018 and 2019, we serviced a little over 150 participants at Krill Park, Burdette Park, Mays High School, Bunch Middle School, Mosley Park, and Johnson Facility. Our program aims to increase test scores, improve study skills, provide certification training, increase homework completion, promote abstinence, and decrease teenage pregnancy rates. We also decrease high school dropout rate, and we provide effective decision-making techniques and empower participants to do the right thing. This week, we concluded our after-school program in which our teens had an award ceremony, they received their completion certificates, and we provided them with a stipend of over $10,000. Future Seekers will continuously work to provide quality programs for teens in our community for striving towards a better future for them. Thank you so much for your consideration, and we're looking forward to our summer program. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Butler, representing Johnson Mason Grace, which is in District Five. I'm actually here today just to kind of tell you what we are doing in the community and to really try and rally your support. Johnson Mason Grace is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization, and we service the helpless veteran population here in South Fulton as well as metro Atlanta. Most recently, last night, we had an event to raise funds for the veterans at Swatch Schools on Virginia Avenue. And we will have some additional events coming up, and we would really like to connect and collaborate with this council, because as we know, homelessness is a real problem in our society. But for us to have homeless veterans in our society is a real tragedy. Johnson Mason Grace was founded by Atlanta native Natasha Leonard, who could not be here tonight. And it's named after her grandfather, John Smith, who was actually a warble to Army veteran, who is celebrating his 95th birthday next month with a huge celebration that he so well deserves. But we'd just like to get the support of the council. We have events coming up on Memorial Day. We will be at Gateway Shelter doing an ice cream social, so if there's any one of you that's available to come out and help to support that event, that would be wonderful. We do have the support here of the wonderful Captain Tooze with the Police Department. We also have a South Fulton resident, Barbara McKee with the LIFT program, as well as Joyce Amster, who is also a South Fulton resident, who is also a veteran. And we really just need the support of our city, of the council as well. We have a gala coming up on November the 9th, so if any of you all are available to attend that event, we would love to see you there. Because again, this is an issue that we can all get behind and be a part of, because our veterans, they deserve our help, and we really should not have homeless veterans among us. So anything that you all can do to connect and collaborate with us is greatly appreciated.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, we'll just call this card again. The first name starts with a Z, last name R, and it looks like 244 Sanitary Cat.
Is that you?
Yes.
Okay, you're right here.
Hi, my name is Zinovia Rachwall.
Give it to the microphone.
Hi, my name is Zinovia Rachwall. And the reason why I came out here tonight is because for about six years, every time I come home from work, I discovered that my gate is broken into my garage, and I found some relented things going into my home. It's been broken my furnace and other things, and it appears that the person has been watching me ever since I've been leaving. And it's been going a long time, and trying to get some help. I have went down to Superior Court and filed court strain order and took out once, but I still cannot get no help. And I'm desperate to afford to stop, and it just won't stop. And I have no one to help me. They have detectives, they don't, we serve change, try to investigate and see what they can do to stop it. So that's what I'm here for, and I'm so sad because I have to come here and let you guys know that someone's watching me when I'm going to work, and they're doing all this stuff down to my home. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Senator Council, that ends the public comments for the evening.
There's the master, point of focus, what I do, I got two going, I'll give each one person, each person two minutes. Go ahead. Who wants to go first?
Go ahead.
Go right here.
Mr. Phillips. In closing the Future Seekers program, did you not let the individuals know that we do have an RSP out and what was about to happen?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I spoke with the citizens and spoke to the city specifically about that. We are narrowing down to the final selections on our STEM program selection. I'm working with Mr. Kerr in that regard. We expect to bring forth that recommendation to council very shortly, and we will move forward with instilling STEM programming at Burdette to Batfield, where Future Seekers was there before, as well as multiple locations across the city is our goal.
But I was just wanting her to know, we have not stopped the programming. We're trying to better our services that we bring to our community, and there's an RSP that has been left, and we will be having after-school programs as well as summer programs continuing at Burdette.
Yes, ma'am. We discussed that in detail.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Put two minutes back on the mic.
Well, I'll be very brief. I want to thank Mr. Hamilton-Brohan, and we are braced with the legendary Mr. Hamilton-Brohan here at the City of South Fulton. I want to thank him for the concert. He invited all of us to his concert that he held at Morehouse College, and it was amazing. And the Honored Ray Parker Jr. And I also want to, he's having a fish fry, and I'll send a notice out to the council. He's invited the entire council to this fish fry on May 19th, 2019, from 5:00 to 8:00. And I'll send that information over to you, because he needs you to RSP, he's P. 5 to 16. And he wanted to speak, but he didn't get here by 7:00, by the cutoff, so I want to make sure that I made this announcement, and thank you for coming.
Well, I want to go with, I give back to communities, schools, churches, and the concert at Morehouse, I put up my personal money, 40,000 dollars, to give back to Clark, Atlanta University, and Morehouse. I want you to know that mine is all, and I send you guys hope and something, all right? Bring your money. I want you to...
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
Thanks for coming.
All right.
Next on the agenda is the City Manager's Markland Report. It's the City of South Fulton Strategic Plan Draft.
Let me pass you everybody, this is now getting pretty close to the...
Well, I wanted to motion that we hold the strategic plan until next meeting.
Well, it's actually just a City Manager's report, and it's included the strategic plan. It's already been transmitted, so there's nothing much to talk about.
Well, the only reason why I said that is because it's 9:15, there's going to be a lot of discussion.
Oh, so don't do the City Manager's.
Right, right. If you can do it in 10 minutes, then we don't go through a lot of things.
We can suspend it. Well, do you have something important to say, Mr. Goddard?
You have something to say?
Yes.
Okay.
So there are a couple of items that we wanted to highlight. I think first, as we discussed previously...
Give the microphone.
As we discussed previously, I am excited to announce that the City of South Fulton has provided, and he has accepted, Mr. Freddie Broome as our new Fire Chief. Mr. Freddie Broome is currently the Fire Chief for the City of Valdosta. He is recognized not only in the state but nationally as one of our country's best Fire Chiefs. He has taken Valdosta from a three ISO rating to a one. He also teaches folks how to become fire professionals by serving as an adjunct professor at the, for both Wireglass Technical College as well as for the Fire Protection and Technology Agency. And so he is an excellent candidate amongst 12 different chiefs who applied to join the City of South Fulton. Think he has stood out amongst many of them, and he is excited to join our team. I think also, in announcing Mr. Broome as our Fire Chief, I also wanted to highlight the amazing efforts of Deputy Chief Jack Butler, who has served as the interim following the retirement of Chief Larry Few. And so while a lot of things have not really come to the forefront, you haven't seen much in the newspaper and things of that nature, I think that's kind of a credit to Chief Butler for keeping the wheels in the middle of the road and keeping us moving forward. And he is just as excited for Chief Broome to join our team, and is excited to play an expanded role under his leadership. And so I think that is the main piece of the City Manager's report that we wanted to highlight. I think just the final thing is, we have gone through transition. I think you guys had an excellent State of the City address. I'm probably biased, but I think it's the best of any city in our region, and that's probably because in the last two years, you guys have accomplished much more than those cities who've also done a great job. And so in addition to highlighting your great efforts, I also wanted to highlight the extraordinary efforts of our staff, not only the public safety and the various different parts of our city, but you know, the full 500 people that we have working for us. And so as we move forward, I just wanted to encourage you to continue to think big, bring new ideas to the table, and challenge us to implement even more things under your leadership. So that concludes the City Manager's report.
Mr. Kelly? I do have a question about one of the city departments that has to go with some of the things that we heard about the comment, and that is, what is this, what is the status of our parks master plan RSP? Has it gone out?
Oh, absolutely, yes. It's gone out, and it has closed, and so now they would be going through the selection process. So it should be coming to you within the next 30 days. You know, they have to do evaluations, the presentations, and all of those activities, but it is definitely in process. Yes, sir.
Okay. Bert?
Next is the City Attorney's Report, quarterly report.
Mayor, Council, I have the quarterly legal report. This will take approximately eight to 10 minutes, depending on how many questions you have. Okay, if you can give us one minute for city clerk, the assistant city clerk, deputy clerk to pull up the presentation. He can go to the next page. Is there a way that I could put it?
Sorry, I don't...
Okay. So if you look at the page that's highlighted on your screen, the, my firm's defense, particularly my defense of the city, is divided into four categories. You have the legal coverage in defense of your boards. That includes attorneys that I send to your board meetings. Those meetings include the City Code Enforcement Board, the Planning Commission, as well as the Board of Zoning Appeals. I have particularly started going to the meetings for the Development Authority. I was appointed as the interim attorney for the Development Authority because their legal counsel is slightly different from your other boards in that it is a separate position, and they have to authorize me to represent them. I can't just do it based on my position as the city attorney. So they did give that authorization at their last meeting. Your board activity constitutes approximately 17% of the activity that we do for the City of South Fulton. Similar to board activity, we have a litigation, which is also approximately 17%. The litigation, you hardly ever see this, this is done in what I call a nerve center. This is my law office that I have in, near Stockbridge. So the litigation is about 17% of the activity that we do. The overwhelming majority of activity, activity that I do for the city, myself and for my firm, is divided into two components. Those two components are your administrative component and your council component. Now, I assign myself as the primary direct contact for each council member, and regardless of what the need is or what the time is, I try to make myself available to each of you. I also do that to your administration, and they have almost equal needs as you. So you'll find at times that you have that competition to get things onto the agenda. And to the mayor's credit, a lot of times, especially earlier, because of request, I was submitting a substantial amount of documents to put on the agenda, but if you have noticed, our meetings are not until midnight, very late into the night, night meeting. They go until 10 or 11 o'clock. So what you have happening is you have the items from administration that are being funneled through. I meet with administration weekly, every Wednesday I meet with department heads, and almost on a daily basis, I talk to several department heads as well as employees, and they have administrative needs. So we have your items that are converging. If you think of two highways, maybe I-75 and I-85, and we have those highways that are converging and trying to make it to downtown, downtown being your meeting agenda, so there are those competing interests. And I'll show you a description of like, for example, I put in this presentation what I, what my firm, myself, what we did for administration just for the month of April, which will kind of illustrate the activities that we do on a daily basis for administration. But before I move to the next slide, I just wanted to congratulate you. I represented you probably, what, three months short of a year and a half, I've been your city attorney, and during that period, you have successfully transitioned through the transition period. All your departments have been successfully established. There's been no judgments against the city, there's been no judgment against any... All your departments have been successfully established. There's been no judgments against the city. There's been no judgment against any council member. And there's been no judgment against any employee. And you have had people who have come after you. You've had multiple people who come after you in every opportunity. You do have a two billion dollar tax base that's being protected. The goal is not to have a one hundred percent success rate. I mean, I do like that we currently have a hundred percent success rate. But the goal is to at least have it to where the numbers are in your favor. So, I can't guarantee that no judge will never rule against you, and it's inevitable. Every city in the state of Georgia, if you continue to operate unless you're resolved, you will have frustrations with the court at some point. You will have people who do win judgments against you, but to date, you have, we have been able to successfully defend you from that during my tenure as your city attorney. If you look to the next page, I provided here a listing of the resolutions and legislation. This does not include agreements. But this is a listing of the resolutions and the legislation that the council members have put forth. If you will see here, I did not include a lot of the items that the administration has put forth, because I think you want a flood discharge. For the most part, these are council items, or very, very high-level administrative items that the council has either directed or requested administrative staff members to put forth. And I've started from July twenty-fourth on this chart, because the last chart that I gave you that gave the list of all adopted items stopped at seven, ten, eighteen. So, I just started from the next council meeting. And as you can see, you have been very, very active, I believe. Any city that I represent, and represent multiple cities, has adopted near as many, as much legislation or initiatives as the city of South Fulton. We also represent Stone Crest. We represent the Sincere Corporation as well. You guys just relatively compare. You are adopting a substantial amount of legislation, but you do have a substantial population. You have a substantial department, and so, it's not unreasonable, but you have adopted a lot of items. And if you go to the next page, these, this is the remainder of items that have been adopted, the legislation that's been adopted by the council. What you will find is that ideally, in fairness to the mayor and in fairness to the agenda link, I try not to give the city clerk more than six items. If you look at six items, you have three that are gonna come from items that, from administration or that worked with the administration department on. And then, that reserve, that reserves three items for council members. And what that means is that every time your items makes the agenda, there's a council member's item who didn't make the agenda. So, I try to keep track of that queue and make sure everybody at least has something that's put on the agenda in a fair and equitable manner. So, if you look at this slide, this is the administrative items that we did, that are, my office prepared for administration. And this is strictly the month of April. Actually, it's through May, it's through May second. But if you look at some of these items, we finalized multiple T-Spot agreements with Fulton County. We provided those documents to Fulton County, and we're currently awaiting Fulton County's feedback on that. We completed the Merck Road agreement with the VMS vendor, as well as the provisions of the agreement, which allowed the city to move forward with the, with the trash pickup data the city just had for the public. These also include assignments, T-Spot agreements with the county, coordinating with the county as far as our detention fines, DOT maintenance agreement, agreements, traffic coordination. I was able to work with the public works department, who Mr. Valerio has been very, very helpful. He has really considerable background knowledge about a lot of these programs specific to this area because of his involvement with Fulton County. So, he's definitely an asset on a lot of the public work, public works project. If you look at code enforcement, we have ongoing lease payoffs to the code enforcement leads that go to code enforcement for. So, the next slide is the continuing activities for administration for the month of April, and the side of the slide after that. And I'm gonna email all councilmen with a copy of this, so if you wanna look at it in more detail. So, then we get to the council legislative agenda, which is essentially what you're competing with administration for, to put items on the agenda, as well as competing with yourselves to get your item on versus another council member. And if you look at this sheet, it's the next two sheets, actually, the next three sheets. Now, this is my understanding of your legislative goals for two thousand nineteen. Now, I would like to, and sometime in the near future, meet with all of you, just to confirm priority. What I've noticed is that in recent months, you have had lists where you have given me priority, but then that has changed, and there's been a preference to put something else before that. So, I just need to confirm what your expectation is as far as priority, and to kind of give you a better understanding of what I intend to do as far as putting the council member items in queue, and to make sure that that's consistent with what you want me to respect when you legislation that you have. So, this is the next three slides. And if you have any questions, I'll answer them, and if not, that's the end of the presentation.
Mr. Kelly? Two comments. Thank you for that presentation. You had me about ten minutes ago, when you said that you've been a city for two years, and you have a one hundred percent living record. And I just think that that deserves a lot of applause, so thank you. For being an excellent attorney for our city. I wonder, I hate that the mayor is like, this is really a mayor's thing to ask him about, but when we get that list of items, and you're asking us to prioritize, I think that it would be cool as a council, if we were able to look at that list and maybe even group meetings by themes, that there's a, you know, I think that, like, I saw some election stuff, that, you know, I mean, I think that there's some groupings that we could do that just bring a little bit more order to our meetings. And some of the, some of the items, some of the items complement each other, so, and maybe even compete with each other. So, hopefully, we can talk through that list better. Mr. Williams?
Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation, but I would like to say, Attorney Walker, you don't only work for the city council. Your job is to be the city attorney. And so, as we go through this evaluation process, and we appoint, we evaluate all of our appointed positions, when I was a corporal, we used to do something called a three sixty degree peer evaluation. And we have about eleven department heads that are in this city that have to work with you. And I would love for, to work with HR, to get some type of three sixty degree evaluation, so that we can give it to all of our department heads who have to work with you. And I'll talk with Mr. Donald about it, because a lot of department heads work for Mr. Donald's. But I would like for them to give anonymous feedback on how they feel that all, how they collaborate, and how they feel the services they feel they're giving from not only you, but all of the appointed positions. And thank you.
Alright. Clerk?
Next items are, of the consent agenda items, item ten through twenty-one.
I'm going to take a motion. That's right.
I would ask that the meeting that getting proclamation is still from the consent agenda.
What?
What? The number, item number ten?
Yeah.
Is actually supposed to be on the May twenty-eighth agenda.
Anybody else? Um, I would like to have item twenty-one, door from the consent agenda to discuss. Okay.
I would, the consent, excuse me, for Comcast proclamation. It was actually listed on the previous council meeting, and we pulled it off. Although it was given out for last weekend, so we need to add it to the consent agenda for the date of May fifth.
So, you've added it already?
Yes.
Okay. So, you have that matter, clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anyone else? Can you read it? You're only adding one, you're taking two out. Am I correct?
Yes, sir. Items eleven through twenty are on consent with adding the proclamation for Comcast.
I'm going to take a motion. I make a motion to approve the agenda, consent agenda as a motion. I remove the second in discussion, ignoring all those in favor. That passes unanimously. That is clear.
Item number twenty-one, council approval of resolutions authorizing leasing agreement with the city of South Fulton and Centtown Crossing.
Pull it in. Go ahead. This is, this is for a small business incubator?
Yes, it is. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that is correct. Yes, sir, that is correct.
Um, I'm just, I'm confused because we have, we're doing this eighty thousand dollar economic development study. We have, we haven't even done the steering committee. I don't even know if we agreed on this steering committee. So, I'm just, I'm wondering, I thought we were holding things like this until after the study was completed.
No, I don't think this is one of those activities that would be required to be held. We have over eighteen hundred businesses in the city, the bulk of them being small business. We don't have much Class A office space and not many places to hold this area. And we have many businesses that are interested in participating, not only as participants, but also as mentors. And so, I think the iron is hot. I think that our citizens are looking to engage and become involved in the business of the city. And so, that's why we moved it forward. I think the other portion of it is, is that we have a certain allocation for the space and, the space and programming for this year. And so, when those funds run out, they're gone. And so, to be able to appropriately launch the program, we brought it forward to you today.
Uh, just in all due respect, it does seem to be rather, that's where the small businesses in our city are located as well.
Well, I think that's a great point, but I think one really good point is that that's where that Publix is coming, and it is a great economic generator for that area. There's also other retail plan, and so, we want to make sure that those businesses that go into that space have an opportunity to be successful and actually incubate. And so, while that may not be where most of the commerce is, it is a great opportunity to be able to grow new and existing businesses, and they would be able to thrive off of a new flagship for that growing area.
Okay, Councilwoman Dunn?
I'm sorry, Mr. Kelly, you fit? Um, yes, I'm clearly, we're not holding everything, so I just, no, I just, thank you.
So, my question in regards to that, this is for the new Publix that's not here yet. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, we've already made the determination, or is that something that the owner is working out that we're going to develop business incubator space inside of the Publix?
No, in the, so, the Publix, the easiest way to say it is down to the right. But there is additional space for the incubator, very similar to what you saw in, so I may be wrong, but it was when we took the Norcross trip. So, I actually think it was in Norcross, where they had the standalone incubator space that was right next to their retail. It actually looks very similar. You'd have the Publix off to the right, and you have the one-level incubator space to the left. And then, you have additional retail and restaurant, et cetera, to the front. So, it's a part of the overall complex.
So, right now, that space is available?
It is available, but it's not built out. And so, the timelines kind of align. So, you have to be able to build it out and place the programming, et cetera, in there. It would actually come online slightly before the Publix, but behind some other things that are going into that space.
And how many business incubators are we looking to do across the city?
So, I actually think that we should have multiple, but we have not presented that yet. I think it's probably best to determine that through our, through your edits to the strategic plan, and then, secondly, through your budget retreat that we still have not set, uh, set a date for.
And also too, what, I guess, is because the owner of that particular facility said, hey, you can use this? Or what gave you the, you know, the free to actually put it there, versus any other part of the city?
Yeah, we looked at about twenty different places, and a great vault of available space that would fit the needs of the incubator was either right outside of our city on Fulton Industrial, or there just wasn't a lot of Class A available space. We looked, Old National, there were some additional spaces in District One. Uh, I believe there was, I, I don't remember them off the top of my head, but basically, we evaluated over twenty locations.
And this is going to be included in the twenty twenty?
So, we begin in the twenty nineteen budget. Funds have already been appropriated and allocated, but continue into twenty twenty. Yes, ma'am.
Alright, this, this guy, this, give your idea ahead.
I got you.
Mr. Donald? Mr. Donald?
I'm sorry, I, I think there is one caveat that the city attorney wants to bring forward to the council, or a, uh...
Yes, so when I, when I reviewed this document, I didn't see an actual monthly lease amount. So, in the resolution, I put the language that he's authorized in the current budget. Or if you want to, you can say up to a maximum monthly rental amount. So, if, if and when you approve this, I would just make that distinction, whether it's just within the current budget or if you want to put a cap on the monthly rental for, for this location.
Alright, listen to you.
Um, Mr. Donald?
Yes, ma'am.
So, the attorney just addressed what I was going to address. It was our own now, and there, there's no timeline in here. And I don't know if it was appropriated and approved in the twenty nineteen budget, because I don't remember seeing that included in the, it could be, but I just...
Oh, yes, ma'am. It was a hundred thousand dollars allocated in the FY eighteen budget.
FY eighteen?
FY, I'm sorry, FY nineteen budget, I apologize. During FY eighteen budget.
Twenty thousand.
A hundred, you said one thousand?
You said a hundred thousand?
A hundred thousand, yes, ma'am. And so, that includes the building leasehold improvement, programming, coordination, et cetera. Yes, ma'am.
So, I'm going to go with my initial. I have two hundred small businesses on paper that have no space to lease in District Four. There is none, with the exception of some space in the village shops that have been vacant for quite some time. That facility could be an incubator at some point in time. So, I'm bringing this up because I have two hundred people on paper that have business licenses. With, and out of that two hundred, there might be maybe eight of them that really have a facility in some other city, but everybody else is in their home.
Okay.
So, when we get to the twenty twenty budget, and if we do have that budget meeting, that's what I'm going to be talking to you about.
I think you still have to also understand that that particular shopping center was designed as a retail shopping center. That's why you have the vacancies, because there is no more parking.
Exactly.
Right. And so, we have to, we have to make sure, Mr. Donald, because we look in there, that we can comply with the available parking. And if you take one of those slots, you're probably gonna kill the rest of the world for the shopping center until he gets others.
But if, but if you have an incubator, it would probably be the best.
I'm not saying we could, yeah, I'm just saying that that's not, the reason why we, the reason why we don't have businesses there because of the parking.
Because of the parking, I know.
Okay, uh...
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Baker?
Yes, I just wanted to know for clarity, are we about to allocate funds towards a business incubator prior to our strategic plan?
The funds have already been allocated. The funds were allocated in FY nineteen budget. This is just highlighting the location.
Right, but we just had a loca, we didn't have a location at the time of the allocation of the funds in the FY nineteen budget, correct?
Correct.
So, we're still about to pick a location prior to our strategic plan?
Absolutely, that's our recommendation.
Okay, I'm clear.
Alright, and do you have a motion on that?
No?
There's no motion.
Okay, I'll let you hear the motions.
I make a motion to approve, um, authorizing a lease agreement for the city of South Fulton and Centon Crossing within the current allocated budget. Within the, within the current allocation, uh, the allocated budget.
Ms. Bill, for lack of a second. Madam Clerk?
Next item is the second reading and adoption of amendment to the Ethics Council.
And so Attorney Walker, I want you to, um, I need a little help with this because I am, um, bringing forth this ordinance because, um, you contacted, um, our HR office and told our HR office that, uh, Kenya Johnson did not serve on our ethics board because she worked for another government in our city. And so what I don't want to do, and what I did think was not the intent of us to do, is if we have law-abiding residents that live in our city and we want to serve on our ethics board, because in District Three, I can think of a number of residents who live, um, in the city of South Fulton, but they work for other cities, not just the county, but other cities. And I've also done research, um, on other cities' ethics policy, and they don't have this provision. So I guess I'm trying to figure out, why do we have a provision that is potentially discriminating against our residents? If, if, if they work for another government agency, if I am, for example, I have a resident who works for Public Works in East Point, and if I appointed him to this ethics board because he works for the city of East Point, he could not serve, the way that this language is written, he could not serve on our ethics board. And so I'm doing a modification to prohibit, I mean, to allow people to not be discriminated against because of where they work. Now, I do understand that if there is a conflict, you know, we have provisions in here that would deal with conflict, then we would have to address that matter, but the way that this is blatantly written, it says the city, it says if employed by another local government doing business with the city, then they could not serve on ethics board. So I guess I'm trying to understand the conflict if somebody works for another government agency. Because right now, for example, we have, don't we have, uh, a MOU or agreement with Peachtree City where we share, uh, with one of, we share, we're using one of their vendors to provide, well, at one point, we were using one of their vendors to provide some type of service? Well, we do it all the time.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not certain, I know that we did have something from Peachtree Corners or there's Peachtree Corners?
Yes, Peachtree Corners, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know that there, there's something to that extent.
So the way that this is written is if I had a resident who worked for Peachtree Corners, that mean, who worked in the, um, in the Peachtree Corner for the municipality, that mean they could not serve on the ethics board and I don't think that's already ten.
So I will say, as far as the language in here, that you can't work for another local government, I did not recommend that to anyone, I did not propose it. I did not encourage anyone to put that in the ordinance. Now, I, I didn't bring that up, but I didn't bring up anything specific. I kind of stay out of, like, when you guys legislate stuff, I kind of stay out of it, but I did not encourage or ask anyone to do that, by, by the council. And I specifically, um, with respect to Kenya Johnson, I didn't solicit anyone. It sounds like someone may have told you that I solicited someone about Kenya Johnson. Now, I was, I didn't say anything about anybody, I allowed the HR to allow that process to go through. I was sent an email, and I don't think the council member specifically asked about Kenya Johnson, but I was asked to confirm with Miss Henderson whether she had vetted for that requirement and I sent an email in response saying, did you vet for this requirement? But I never, I don't recall the person who asked me to do that bringing up Kenya Johnson or having a discussion. And I know that HR in response then told me that Kenya Johnson may or may not be, um, eligible. But, I mean, I guess that's, that's the council's discretion, if you...
I mean, I just don't want residents discriminated against because they work for another, uh, a government agency, that's their right. And so, um, you know, because she works for the county, do you see any type of, uh, conflict?
That is purely discriminatory by the council. You guys can allow people to serve who are, who are employees of, um, entities that you're contracting with, you may deny them the right. That is purely a legislative and administrative decision that is, that is within the purview of the council. I would feel like I was taking sides if I told you whether I thought it was appropriate.
So that's what I'm typically doing, trying to avoid any resident who lives in this city who works for another government agency. Um, I'm trying to pre, pre, prevent them from being discriminated against, so that's what this ordinance is about. So I would ask council if it's possible that we can approve ordinance to amend Title I administration of the city of South Fulton ordinance to ensure high ethical status with the city for other lawful purposes, just for that one change.
Is there a second, that's your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second? Ms. Bill, for lack of a second, let me caution you. This is not by Kenya Johnson, Kenya Johnson's already done.
Yes, she already done it.
It's already done. You know, so if, if anything, it would apply to going forward, uh, on it, I just want to make that clear. You know, so we didn't have to, we didn't even have to mention Kenya Johnson there.
I don't know why she's in this context.
So, next, Ms. Clerk?
Next is the second reading and adoption of the traffic calming ordinance, Councilwoman Dunn.
I be, I believe, uh, this is something that Mr. Valazuela is, um, bringing forth, but I do have a question. No, I'm gonna keep.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This will be the second reading of the traffic, uh, cal, calming ordinance that, that was presented at a prior, uh, council meeting. Uh, should you approve this ordinance, the city of South Fulton will have, uh, the modes and the steps that we can regulate when it comes to traffic calming and travel of the city of South Fulton.
Yes, so I, I believe we voted on this when, when we were still dealing with Fulton County, so technically we're moving this over with some amendments, as far as this is what the city of South Fulton is adopting, just for clarity, correct?
Uh, yes, it, it is a more detailed plan with different options that you will have. Uh, we were able to, um, bring other traffic calming for other jurisdictions.
Okay.
Uh, we ensure that, uh, this will serve much better to the city.
So I do have one other question and then I'll make the motion. Um, in your implementation stage, I know right now we go between Public Works and our police department. Who is the liaison for the traffic? So like, for instance, if a resident calls and says that she needs people, that, you know, people speeding through the community, she wants an evaluation, um, whether or not signage or whatever. Now, sometimes I send an email to the police department and then sometimes I send an email to you. How, who streamlines that, or who, who should it come to first, because in the implementation process, it doesn't say that?
Right. Then, that's two things. PD will, uh, enforce the speed, the posted speed limit that we have on the roads. Uh, Public Works will ensure that we post the speeds, uh, that are in accordance with the state and it goes in accordance with statute. So police is, uh, they're about to get the state, uh, uh, ready for the city of South Fulton. Fulton can't have it before, but, um, it's my understanding they're about to get that so they can start enforcing the posted speeds that we have on the roads. And Public Works, uh, it is, uh, we're tasked to do the traffic studies and based on NBCCD guidelines, will be posting proper signage on the roads, maybe on, uh, like signs or, um, uh, make the recommendations to you all based on any request that we get, uh, uh, if we receive any requests for traffic studies.
So should the request come directly to you first and then you shepherd out to the police department? Or are you all doing the same traffic study, is what I'm trying to figure out to streamline it? Or does it even matter?
No, I don't, I don't think police has any traffic study, they just enforce, uh...
So he does have his traffic unit that does go out to evaluate some situations, some roadblocks, things, all of that nature? So I'm just trying to figure out.
Anything that comes to, for traffic says, just answer it.
Okay. All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised traffic comment for the city of South Fulton.
I'll remove the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes unanimously, Madam Clerk?
Next is the second reading and adoption of the FY nineteen mid-year budget amendment.
I'll let you hear the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve FY nineteen budget. Do you make a motion?
Yeah.
Second. I'll remove the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes.
Council's approval to amend the Resolution twenty seventeen, old reading standards for issuing proclamations and letters of commendation. I don't know, we're all in the city, we're all...
You want to speak to it? Uh, basically, it seeks to address some of the concerns we had relative to, um, the issuance of proclamations. Um, you know, we had previously adopted, um, some standards and so we try to kind of balance what we heard recently, so I'm asking for your support. Hopefully it addresses the concerns that were raised.
I'll let you hear the motion. Ma'am, I'll let you hear the motion.
Um, I make a motion to accept the revised standards for issuance of, uh, proclamations and resolutions and letters of commend, commendations, please listen.
Bill, for lack of a second?
All right, thanks.
Mr. Baker? For, uh, point of order, while you pass the mid-year budget, uh, it, I think we're all thankful for that. The CFO, uh, had an item on the, you...
On the I?
On the I that he wanted to, I think he thought was germane to you.
Yeah, but it's an emergency.
It's not an emergency, but...
Okay, that's actually my first question.
But the budget...
Does it have FIS associated with it?
Yes, associated with the amendment.
Do we have a copy of the FIS that associated with it? Here's my problem. If I, if she brings something, she brings something and it does not fit.
Number FIS, you have ten of them.
I can't do it.
I think for this instance, why is it important for the seat, for the treasury to discuss this is because his budget modification is based on the creation of the I.
So last, the last time...
All right. That's my point.
Understood.
I want to put it on you. All I'm saying is I got to be equitable to everybody.
No argument?
There's a legislative process and the question is, did it, did it pass the legislative process? And obviously that person would be nice, and we know. Now, you said it's not an emergency, does that mean that you can't come back? On next meeting?
So the budget was divided into two, we have operation and we have capital budget. Capital budget, we are going to fund capital budget with borrowing. So we can pass the, as we have passed it, there will be nothing that will be done on capital budget until we have this I, because that's the one that is funding capital projects. So as long as we understand that staff will not talk anything about capital projects.
Okay, here's what I do. I, let's put it on, okay? But it ain't bad. It's not, because it didn't go through the legislative process, yours don't go through, I'm gonna put yours on. And so I'm saying to you is...
You put it through the legislative process, it's the finance department. It's the finance department.
Okay, we're gonna do it. We're gonna do it. But you tell, I don't know what he, he bangs. So, uh, let's go ahead.
So we have the, uh...
You want to, you want to announce it, Mr. Madam Clerk? Give it to you.
Mr. Revue, yes. There is a revue, he has a revue.
He has it, I hear.
Can you announce it, Madam Clerk? We go forward. Give it, give it a minute.
I, I don't, I don't have the, uh, resolution.
Is that the resolution, sir?
You said, ask the resolution, then it's in there. You didn't send it to the clerk?
So the, uh, financial advisor has a resolution that was sent for review and the resolution was sent to the clerk, the clerk has got a copy of it, but it didn't make it to the agenda. But we have the one attorney here that has to explain how you are going to, uh, create the I that is going to fund what you have just passed. You have to choose the members of the I. So when you come on the twenty eighth, you have to pass that. And that's what he has to explain.
Okay, uh, that's one round.
So, so I'm unclear. So did, we're creating it without the legislation? We're just earmarking the money? We didn't?
Now, when it, last time we discussed here, there were two things that the financial advisor did explain.
Recommended.
So we are, what we did was to re, to remove each and every capital projects in our operating to get it to be funded by I. So there's no capital projects in our operating, everything is there. So what you have adopted will fund you with operating, but capital projects will not be done until you approve the I that is funding. So to approve that, you explained today, then on the twenty eighth, you have to approve the resolution and by that time, you also have to have members that are going to work on the I. But they have to explain the stages that you have to take before you make the approval on the twenty eighth. Without that funding, there's no capital projects that will be done because they are going to be funded by the I, including the public safety building.
Yes. You know, can we, can we have a presentation? Because this is my problem. I think we're jumping really fast on some of these things and we don't have a whole context. And I'm concerned that if you haven't seen this resolution that adopted, that we are making sure we dot our i's and cross our t's.
So here's, so here's my understanding of talking to the lobby. Now, I did review the resolution, I did, um, submit it for inclusion on the agenda, but because the agenda is so crowded, it did not make this agenda. Um, however, tonight, in my talking with Mr. Malazi, my recommendation was that we, the council, not adopt anything, that you not move forward because there's certain things that you do want to put in place, there's background information on I's that you want to have. So as part of that, Mr. Malazi, um, and myself, has asked Doug Selby to come. He works with us, um, he's been working in conjunction with us in, um, on the I creation. He specializes in I financing and he would just like to give you a little bit of the background as far as the financing component. And I think Mr. Malazi is just, um, is excited to get this moving forward because there are a lot of capital projects that he's hoping to finance through this I vehicle. But as far as tonight, the, my recommendation would be just listen to Doug Selby for informational purposes, but don't adopt anything.
So, well, yeah, but we're all men who always have the financial advice and the body of mind. What happens that will be speaking?
Ms. Willis, next. Bill, come on up.
Uh, my question is, uh, I just spoke with, uh, Mar, Councilmember Baker and he's under the impression that...
No, 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 let me speak to my...
Okay, well, let me ask the question specifically. Is the I and the Development Authority, they are two separate authorities, right?
That is correct.
And they are not supposed to have the same people on them?
Well, you can, you can make them have the same people, it's just, it's your... Well, you can, you can make them have the same people. It's just, it's your discretion. If you, if you want them to be two sep- if you would like them to be two separate groups, then it's the council's discretion.
Yes, I will.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Khalid.
Okay. Mr. Selby, now we talked a lot. I, 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 I want you to talk it and just clear some of these things up. But I, I do know that it has been recommended when we, when we were looking at the DDA, it was recommended to us by several financial experts that because all of these different organizations will be issuing bonds, many of them in the city's name, backed by the full faith and credit of the city, that it is helpful to have at least some overlap on the boards so there are people who know what is, what is going on across the boards. And the next, the next thing that I think is important to discuss is that when we do issue a bond, if we decide to issue that, the government obligation bonds could be on the ballot. Is that correct? Or is that something the voters can, can vote on whether or not they want to go down that road? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Doug Selby. I'm a lawyer, accountant, and insurance clerk. I left a brochure to describe us. Our name, firm's name changed since the last time I was here. We merged with another firm. So that's, that's what I'm here. The first slide that I handed out, sort of, this is, we could talk about this and really be, kind of, cover most of what I wanted to talk about. My understanding is, is that the, your financial advisor has given you the recommendation that you move your capital spending to a bond, a longer-term financing, and use your O and M budget with the taxes that come out, you know, annually. And so what I did was I pulled together a chart that shows really some of the tools that cities have. And so on the left-hand side, you see geo-bonds or obligations. Councilman Khalid, those are the bonds that typically require that you put them on the ballot and voters vote on. And that's when you pledge your full faith and credit. Then there are TAD obligations, tax allocation districts. I think I understand that you are applying for redevelopment powers and that that perhaps will be put on the referendum. With that power, you have the ability to finance a variety of things that fall into your redevelopment plan. And the, the conditions to do a TAD obligation are the creation of, to get redevelopment powers, you have to go on the ballot. And have you done that already? You are already, you're going to be on the ballot or attempting to be on the ballot. Once on the ballot, you can get a local act passed. There's a referendum that would give the city the ability to exercise redevelopment powers. And then once you have that, you can, you have the power to direct your own taxes into projects that, that you specify. That's the power of a, of a TAD. Then there are Development Authority and Downtown Development Authority obligations. And as you can see, those can be used for just a, just sort of limited things. Privately financed developments or municipally owned proprietary developments like stadiums or ruins. The projects that I understood that you wanted to get off of your, your plan into your capital project are really municipally owned projects. And for those, your two options are geo-bonds or to do financing. If you had a specialized authority, like a public facilities authority, you could use that. Or you would use a URA as what many entities are, are using around the state. Virtually every city that we work with has one or more of these tools. And they sort of use these authorities to meet the purposes that they're trying to, trying to meet. So that's what I wanted to describe here. The, the, in a long story short, the URA statute is a nineteen fifty-four statute. It was created really in connection with cities and counties in Georgia using urban renewal dollars. They were raising local matches to get federal dollars for urban renewal. But many cities and counties around the state continue to use the authority to finance projects that are appropriate. In order to have a predicate to use a URA, you have to have an urban redevelopment area designated. It should be, it could be all or a part of the city. It's a part of the city that would meet the conditions. The conditions fall under a variety of conditions like in areas of the city that are not contributing to the economic base. If you can determine that such areas exist, you can create a URA. And within it, you can, you can finance projects. The reason that the URA is, is preferred over other authorities is that it gives you the ability to not just do sort of garden variety development, but also municipal projects. And so with the URA in place, you have the ability to do a financing for, for public projects. The typical way that many cities and counties use their URAs is that you will create a URA. The URA will enter into a contract with the city. That contract is through an intergovernmental contract that allows the city to make payments to the URA to pay for the project. That stream of payments is then monetized and a bond is either purchased by, you know, a bank or sold to a group of bond investors. The city gets the cash through the URA and you deploy it for your capital projects. That in its essence is what, is what the URA could do for you in terms of financing your, your capital projects. Were the council determined to, to take this approach? The steps would be to draft, or we actually have already prepared drafts of ordinances and resolutions that would designate and declare an urban redevelopment area. We would get the map and the description of that area, attach it to it. That would be before your board. Secondly, you would activate the URA by appointing members to the URA. The mayor and council would appoint the members to the URA. Third, you would adopt a redevelopment plan. This can be a very simple plan that describes the manner in which you plan to make improvements within the city and ties that to the purposes in the act. And then you would then direct staff to go ahead and get a financing done, which would typically be in the form of a resolution, an intergovernmental contract. And in Georgia, we have to take that and get it passed through the state, through the, sorry, the courts, through a validation process. And so that obligation would be a validated obligation. But that in its essence is why we would, would do financing. With that, maybe we'll answer any questions.
He must have done pretty good. He must have done pretty good, Doug. Appreciate you.
So I, I would say that, I think I understand that in order to fit this within this year's budget, that the ask would be to do this at the next meeting.
Right.
So we've prepared drafts of the resolutions, which should give you time to, you know, to review those before we come back and ask you to approve.
That is correct.
But if, if you were to take that task, that's what we would do.
Okay.
So the main thing is we need you to appoint the URA board.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
Next item, council approval to enter into an agreement with Sage Networks as a vendor to develop and implement the planning and permitting software not to exceed two hundred thousand.
I will accept the motion. I make a motion to approve this permit and planning software.
Say again.
Probably move the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those in favor? All those in favor, Jay?
They need, we need innovation.
Okay. The Department of Defense, is she ready?
Next item, council. Next item, council approval to enter into a contract with Bass Professionals LLC to provide accounting support for the City of Southfold and Finance.
I will accept the motion. I make a motion to approve the contract with Bass Professionals for accounting support for finance. Probably move the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? That passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Council's first reading to amend, I'm sorry, council first reading of amending park advisory ordinance.
More for you.
This is the first reading, so.
Okay. She wants to get a first reading.
Council approval of an IGA with Georgia Department of Transportation for upgrading traffic signals at Waltham Road.
I approve that we, I mean, I approve that we approve the IGA with Georgia Department of Transportation to upgrade the traffic signal at Waltham Road.
Probably move the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? That passes.
Council's approval of a resolution naming a voting, voting delegate and an alternate for the twenty nineteen GMA conference business meeting and to participate in the parade of stars.
I will accept a motion.
Stars?
Oh, great, great. You have to name your delegate and your alternate.
Um, we have to find out who's going and what day this is on because.
It's, um.
It's at GMA. On what day do we need these?
The meeting, the annual business meeting will be held Monday, June twenty-fourth at eight thirty a.m.
So who's gonna be there? All right.
No, I mean, I won't be there Monday. I'm leaving Monday.
Clay, you gonna be there?
Nope.
Okay, Ms. Jackson, you gonna be there? Okay, so those, those who are going to be there.
When does it start?
Twenty-fourth through the twenty.
It starts like Thursday, the week before.
Starts on Friday.
So, those, those.
No, it's over.
That's not a fact.
I thought they were gonna be there first.
Well, you mean that be on Thursday.
She said she'll be there.
You'll be there?
You'll all be there Thursday.
That's that Monday.
So you the delegate. You make a large motion, I make a big one.
So you gonna be there this morning?
Still need somebody for the flag.
No. Go ahead. You got it.
No, the Monday after.
Catherine for the delegate. Who's for the flag?
Ma'am for two.
You for the flag, sir?
I would like to nominate Ellen Willis.
No. I would not be there. The last time I, I was designated to do parade of the flags, I didn't even have a flagpole. And I went and sat through the whole ceremony, didn't even get carried. No, I wasn't providing the flag. I'm not doing it. I'm not.
Mayor, council, we just need to know if you want to participate so we can fill out the form, but.
Let's, let's go on.
I need a name. I need two names.
We got one.
I have a question.
We got one.
I have a question. So if you're a delegate, does that mean that you get your fees refunded, that you split me a shirt?
No, ma'am.
You'd like to nominate, currently, guns to the flag.
Only that could work.
I'm sorry, can I just go? Is this, is this time sensitive? Do we have to make a decision tonight?
Yes, I have to give him.
I'll just put anybody's name and we'll figure it out.
We're Catherine now. Catherine can do it.
Are Catherine you voting?
She can do both.
Are you gonna be walking off today?
You're so close to being voted.
Okay, we're sorry, Ms. Whitey.
This is for the voting delegate. All I need to do is fill out a form to say that, okay.
Catherine is gonna be the voting delegate.
And an alternate delegate.
Oh, and alternate, okay.
That means I gotta go to all sessions?
No, you just need to be at the meeting Monday morning.
Oh, okay. You alternate?
Alternate.
You the alternate, are you?
Alternate.
Okay, currently, guns will be the alternate. Currently, guns will be the alternate.
So you need to match the flag.
Right.
Now, are, do, do you want to participate in the parade of flags? I don't have to.
What, are you asking me?
No, I'm asking, I'm asking.
Okay, obviously, they all want to participate in the parade of flags.
Okay, I will send that in. No, no hesitation.
All right.
So now you can make your motion for Catherine, Ms. Councilmember Rawls, as the voting delegate.
For Councilmember Rawls to be the voting delegate. And for Councilwoman Guns to be the alternate.
Second.
Probably move the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? That passes unanimously.
The last item is council approval of amending Resolution twenty nineteen zero one to zoning moratorium. Councilmember Willis.
Yes, I need to extend it because we have not had a chance. Ms. Reed, can you please, do you mind? No, she's there. She was waiting on me. I'm extending this because I, I had a conversation with Ms. Reed and we need more time to meet with the attorney, you, and Woods in order to change, update my zoning ordinance in order to let the moratorium correct. Without this, my moratorium will be expired.
Yes, so we have been in communication, attorney and I, mostly dealing with some things that we're trying to bring before you all for review coming soon to end the moratorium more. So we've had discussion on some things that maybe have concerns to you all that we're gonna work together, she and I, on trying to figure out after some things we've heard you all say. We're gonna work for it, bring it to you all for your consideration.
Okay, so I approve that we approve this moratorium for District three, please.
Oh, exactly. Oh, you're buying that stuff, oh.
I mean, I, I didn't know whether I wanted to extend.
Oh, when does it expire?
When does.
It already expires.
Well, as, as written, I kept it intact. So if you previously had a moratorium, this would extend it for another, I think it's forty-five days. So if you want out of the moratorium, then now would be the time to let councilwoman Willis know so that her motion.
I told you guys, but I'm sorry.
Excuse me, excuse me. Let's get some hold it.
She said she got you included.
Yeah, everyone who was, let me, I, I have it pulled up. Can you watch it, sir?
I'm sorry.
So we have District three, five, and six that have the moratorium along rezoning and variances. And this extends that for sixty days. And then we have District four, three, four, five, and six that have sixty day on the halfway room house. And then we have District four alone that has the extension through September thirty, two thousand nineteen on the ZP agricultural.
So what do I need to extend for forty-five more days? All of it?
Well, right now it has sixty days, but if you want me to reduce it to forty-five, make a new date on the.
Oh, no, no. I thought you said something expired and I needed to extend it. That's.
Yeah, your, your District three zoning in variance moratorium, as well as your group home halfway house, expired.
Okay, I want.
So this would extend that for sixty days.
I want it extended for forty-five days. Would that give you enough time to do what you need to do? Okay.
Well, potentially. The reason I say that is because we still have to go through the ZP, the Zoning Procedures Act requirement, requirements, which is gonna require notice, the pending condition to be. So we can corral everyone in a perfect situation. Yes, forty-five days. It's probably safer to give us sixty days to complete it.
Okay, can I do sixty? So I'm, I'm move that we extend. I move that we extend moratorium for Districts three, four, five.
Well, that's how it's written.
Okay.
That's how it's currently written. So if you had it previously, it's gonna stay in place for another sixty days.
Okay, good.
All right.
Mr. Khalid?
Second.
I just, I just want to be clear because I, I thought that the zoning moratorium is expired on May tenth, which is how we ended up here in three zoning cases tonight.
Yes, it is expired. So this would extend it for sixty days.
Okay. I do want to come out of the moratorium. District six.
Okay, everybody for District six.
No, no, no. Seven has always been.
No, no.
I think we, we weren't, we were talking about the people who already.
Everybody.
Okay. So the motion on the floor excludes District six. Are we okay with that motion?
Yes.
Is that, I understand it, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's go. All those in favor? That passes.
Sorry, I have another point. Sir, please.
What's your point?
Um, want to hear your, your comment. You only heard modifications tonight. I guess I can go to the floor later.
All right. At this time, I would like to see if you all agree we're going to executive session.
I move that we go into executive session to discuss what is the personnel litigation in real estate.
All right.
Is somebody second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to have a, 30 seconds.
30 second, what now?
Less than 10 seconds, more than 30.
10 seconds, you're on the clock.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank our, uh, police, our fire, and our EMS for service and, uh, students, Mr. Long, on, uh, last week with the wheelchair. Came to the, uh, career day, they saw a need, and they met the need. And, uh, I believe it received some positive attention from our communications department as well. But I just wanted to say thank you for the record, for our police department, fire.
Okay, go ahead. Alright. Let's vote for the executive session. Let's go. Close that executive session.
I'd like to make a motion to close the executive session.
Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion? Alright, close the executive session.
I move that we call-
He already did, he the second. Alright. Alright, we probably move to second, in discussion, hearing none. Boom, vote, let's vote.
We vote.
Vote to close the executive session. Now, let's vote to, uh, the jury.
Did we have action? I second. Did we have action?
No, we didn't have action.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, adjourn.
Second.
How to move to second? Nope. Let's go. All in favor, raise your hand. Raise your hand.
You lost our call.
There you go. I almost hit you.
I know you didn't have that camera going. Did you have a camera?
No, he didn't have it.
Oh, God, thank you.